We'll begin with the prayer by Commissioner Vandergriff, and I will lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, Great and Almighty God, we thank you, Lord, for the privilege of coming into your presence. We thank you for the grace and the mercy that you shower on us, your children. Thank you for sending Jesus. Thank you that he blotted out the handwriting of the ordinances that were against us, and that he took those out of the way and he nailed those to his cross. And after rising three days later, that was a payment for our sin. Lord, we call out to you. We cry out to you, Lord. We ask you for wisdom in making decisions, and that those decisions would glorify you, Lord. Please guide our speech and our actions so that we could be an example, a godly example to a sinful world. In the name of our Advocate, our Deliverer, our Redeemer, our risen Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the appearance of citizens for any items not on the agenda. If you're here for the library board, that'll appear under new business and under the law director update, so you can speak on that then. And I've got a sign-in sheet here for everyone interested in speaking on that. But if you're here for anything that's not on the agenda, you can come up now, state your name, and you'll have an address, and you'll have three minutes. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval and correction of the agendas, starting with the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor of approving as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll have the approval of the regular agenda. Commissioner Mays.
Mr. Chairman, if Commissioner Isbell would be okay, I'd like to move the operations committee report under Section 6, the committee reports, maybe the third bullet.
Okay, move operations under the budget report.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that all right with you, Chairman? Commissioner Allen.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move the new business for the schedule of a public hearing, item number 12, I'd like to move that to maybe 5A.
After Vice Chairman Vowles' report, okay.
Mr. Chairman, would that be appropriate if we didn't hear that in the public hearings section?
If we do the...
If we moved the new business, I'm just curious if that would be appropriate to move it under 5A, to make it 5A, since Commissioner Vowles didn't even address that issue in the public hearing.
We want to make it a separate... What do you think, Jay, is that a...
Mr. Chairman.
Make it a separate issue?
Yes, sir.
Was there a reason for not to have people speak during the appearance of citizens?
Well, if it's on the agenda already, they normally just speak under that. The appearance is for something that's not...
Okay, so this is on the agenda, so you want to... I see.
I guess Commissioner Mays is concerned, it's not, this would be a...
It wasn't a part of it.
It's not necessarily under that, yeah, it's not under the report, but I think he's just trying to move it.
You're gonna have to go with 5A, or you're going to read up to the entire agenda.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
But, okay, so...
Just moving it up for convenience to visitors over here.
So that'll, so after Vice Chairman Vowles could conclude his report, and that way...
So this is 5A? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, 5A.
Is that okay with you, Commissioner Allen?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other additions?
Chairman Anderson, I need the new grant contract for violent crime intervention added to the purchasing engine, if possible, please.
Yeah, Commissioner Jaeger, did you want to add the...
Yes, I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Was there anything else, Mayor?
Yes, the authorization to execute the second wave settlements and the amendments to prior settlement documents on opioid litigation.
Opioid, is that...
In your section, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Foster, to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move to Section 5, public hearing report, Vice Chairman Vowles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the public hearing this evening, prior to our regular agenda, we had two public hearings. The first one was on Resolution Number 23-1-1073 to amend the Anderson County zoning resolution to include the property at 122 Mountainside Lane, Rocky Top, parcel 0 through 0, tax map 008 from A2, rural residential district to A1 agricultural forestry district.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said before, you know, when it comes out of planning commission, it was just about the rezoning. And to put a campground or anything else in there would be a separate issue. But the problem that I have with the property, and I've had the neighborhood, the people, the neighbors in that area, reach out to me, call, and I tell them that they're welcome to come and speak, and they say, "But that's why we elect you." So Commissioner Vowles and myself both went up there this week. The property does flood on the bottom. The road's very narrow when it comes across. And the zoning, the planning commission is actually redoing some of these zones. So I think that because of all the problems that we have with the flooding and the roads, and Commissioner Foster can tell you the issues they have from the city already in that area. And I think at one time, there's maybe some sewer issues up there from the flooding, and it caused more serious issues. So that's some things that we really need to look at before I think we decide on the rezoning. Thank you.
Do we have any motions on this parcel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is a public hearing, zoning resolution Number 23-2-1075 to amend to include the rezoning of the property at the intersection of the east end of Marlowe Circle and Oliver Springs Highway, Clinton, parcel 14.03, located tax map 087 from A2, rural residential district to C1 general commercial district.
Commissioner McCamey, what's your motion?
This property, the zoning was approved in October, I think, on a 15 to 1 vote. I think we need to rescind that motion that was approved prior to taking any action on it now at this time. So I would make a motion that we rescind our previous motion, maybe in October, concerning this piece of property.
I think it's November, Robert.
It's November, okay.
Okay, so we've got a motion, are you okay to second that? Commissioner Bochamp, this is to rescind the November motion.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other discussion? Does everybody understand we're voting to rescind the November vote? Let's go to the board and vote. Yes is to rescind the November motion.
Mr. Chairman, since I wasn't here for that original vote, should I be voting on this? Okay.
You can, yeah.
Pardon?
There's not a conflict of interest, yeah.
Thank you.
14 yes, 1 no. Motion to rescind passes. We have a motion on the new hearing tonight, then. Commissioner McCamey.
Make the motion, go ahead and approve the planning commission recommendation.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner White. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 1 no, motion passes. Anything else?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, that concluded our public hearings. Thanks, sir.
Next, we'll move to item 5A. Commissioner Allen.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the past few weeks, I've been getting some information about our citizens, the great citizens of Anderson County, who are concerned about the books in the library. And these citizens have been going to meetings, and that you are aware of, and talking to a lot of different people, trying to resolve this issue. And I do understand that Rachel Communell has issued a memorandum through our law directors, and specifically talking about three books. But there is a wider selection of books that the citizens are concerned about, that I really do think needs, that this commission needs to, you know, look at and get a handle on. The three books in particular that Ms. Communell talked about was, one was "It Feels Good to Be Yourself," "Families Like Mine," and "Granddad's Camper." But I do want to maybe not disavow the other ones, but really maybe give some insight into one of the books, "It Feels Good to Be Yourself." It was described as a book discussing gender identity in great detail, and it's geared toward 3 and 9 years olds. And the book says that the book teaches children about transgender and cisgender identities. Quoting from the book, "This is Xavier, he is a cisgender boy." That means that Xavier was born, that when Xavier was born, everyone thought he was a boy. And as he grew older, it turned out everyone was right, he is a boy. Everyone feels like either a boy or a girl, except a non-binary child, the book explains. The book goes on to say, "This is Ruthie's friend Alex. Alex is both a boy and a girl." When Alex was born, everyone thought Alex was a girl. But Alex is both a boy and a girl. This is Alex's gender identity. Another character, JJ, is neither a boy or a girl, and has their pronouns. Ever since JJ was very little, they never felt, now this is the pronoun that they're using for JJ. Ever since JJ was very little, they never felt exactly like a boy or a girl. They just felt like themselves. This is JJ's gender identity. The children's book further claims that there are many different ways to be a boy, or a girl, or a non-binary. Sometimes kids feel that the gender identity isn't always the same. Mr. Chairman, the book goes on to say, "It often changes." When I was looking at the Tennessee code, annotated code 3917109, it defines obscenity to include the work taken as a whole lacks serious literary and artistic and political or scientific value. Now, I do want to say that some of our county services, they have these waiting rooms, a waiting area, and I would be hard-pressed to really believe that in our county buildings, they would have a waiting area that would have some of these books in the waiting area. Now, what this code also talks about is the fact that the book cannot supplant a parental role. And clearly, when you tell a child that they can be a boy or a girl at the same time, or they can be neither at the same time. And the book goes on to talk about the fact that, you know, maybe the parents were wrong, that when this child is being raised, that the parents was wrong. And this is a fundamental, solid relationship that children have with their parents. They don't want to be raised to feel like their parents was wrong about being a boy or being a girl. And so according to the code, that this book does lack serious literary and artistic, political, and scientific value. Because it is absolutely wrong that a child can be a boy or a girl, or a child can be neither. And so that's the point of those three particular books that our law director had us look at. Also, I was made aware of some books that were in the county-funded libraries that I think, you know, needs to be looked at. So some people have this packet here, and it's called "Let's Talk About It." If you have that packet, you can turn to page 1.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order. We're discussing something that's not a motion being made. We need a motion.
Sure.
And a second, and vote on that to continue discussing. We're discussing something, but there's no motion on the floor. Our role as a county legislative body is to act on motions. And we're discussing something that I assume we may vote on something later, and we may not.
Do you want, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for discussion of the library book selection. And we do have some dates for that, Mr. McCamey. Is that okay to talk about those dates now with this motion?
Let's, I guess if, let's maybe vote on the motion, and then we can schedule, we can do the scheduling once we see if the motion passes. Are you making that as a motion?
Yeah, so my motion is to schedule a public hearing on the library books.
Second by Commissioner Isbell, okay, got a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion. Commissioner Vareen.
Yes, Legal gave an opinion on this, and this is not recommended by the library board. It's just some sort of attempt to go behind the library board's back and take their power away from them, that sort of thing. I mean, you know, if we're going to get in to looking at every single book in the library, everybody can find something offensive in the library. You know, it's a place of free speech. I mean, I don't like Tucker Carlson. But I can understand his book being in a library, you know. So, I mean, this is just inappropriate for us to go through and nitpick books out of the library. You know, we have a library board, we've got a legal opinion on these books. I say that, you know, I'm just totally against this. There's free speech, you know, and everybody's got their own opinions.
Thank you, Commissioner Vareen, Commissioner Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I've got a couple of questions on how we arrived to tonight. And Commissioner Allen, or whomever can enlighten me. But one of the issues is talking about how citizens have brought to commission's attention concerns regarding these books. And I've sat on here since September 1st. This is the first I've heard of this issue when it arrived on the agenda. So the only time I've heard from citizens has actually been yesterday and today about this issue. So I'm just curious of what meeting I may have missed to have missed some of these concerns. And the second question I have, too, is the library board meeting, I mean, have these books, I'm not stating a position, I'm just really curious about the process here. Have these specific books that we're addressing been, you know, brought up and addressed by the library board?
There's, the three books have gone through a recertification request, and the board's minutes aren't, I don't know if they finished the last month's minutes and submitted them, but the board voted unanimously to retain the books and then asked the director to give some consideration to placement, if that's a concern, was just, they still left the discretion up to the director, but the board's decision was to go ahead and keep the books. And the law director, Jay Jaeger, was there and gave an opinion. We responded to the obscenity claim.
Got you. And the last part is just, with this public hearing, which I'm all in favor of a public hearing on any issues that the citizens want to speak, will there be parameters in this public hearing? Or are we just going to take every book off the shelf and go through it? I guess I'm just...
Well, I mean, I don't want to keep jumping in. I chair the library board also, but the books that, the titles that were in our mailbox, the board hasn't seen any reconsideration requests on those at all. And I'm not sure that all of them are in our libraries. And the ones that I was able to find in the database searching, it looks like most of them are in the adult biography, or adult nonfiction, or teens, or something like that. It's not like in the young children's section.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Mays, I can shed a little light on this issue. We were asked to write an opinion specifically on three books. And while they might not be what all of us like to see, they are not to the level of obscenity.
Who asked you, Mr. Jaeger?
The library board. The library board has a procedure set up that they have a book review committee. If there's a complaint on a book, it goes to the book review committee. They look at it, and I've told them if they have specific books they want us to write a legal opinion on, and we're comparing the facts, the illustrations, the language, to the standing law. We also used U.S. Supreme Court cases. And we'll do that anytime they request us. But the opinion that we issued was only on those three books. And again, don't confuse our legal opinion with our personal opinion, okay? Our legal opinion is an objective review of the law, and that's it. Now, we've had some more correspondence with some of the people that have found other books that are offensive. I think the way the procedure's supposed to work is send that to the library board, defer this matter to the library board. If there is a complaint on the book, let it go through the process. If they're stuck on it, they're not quite sure. As I've said before, they're always welcome to ask us for a legal opinion, and we'll do as good a job as we always do on that. That's the procedure that's in place. I feel like there'll be more coming before our library board at the next meeting, and they may need my help or not, but it's totally up to them. They may be able to handle them at their book review subcommittee. So, but whatever the case, that's what this opinion is about, about three books, and not anything else. But we'll be glad to help them in the future if they have questions. But there is a procedure set up right now.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing that we're voting on, and it gives more opportunity for people to speak for and against them, to express their opinion. And what happens is, the best that we can do is advertise our meetings, and have it in the paper, and on the radio. But still yet, we only probably touch about 30% of the population. Because after this is said and done, people say, "Well, I never knew about that." So this gives everybody the opportunity to speak again, to go into it. And when I was on the library board back in 2011, we had a similar issue, but we handled it in between. And what we did is the librarians, of course, I think they've all changed now, is they agreed to take this controversial book, because it had a lot of language in it and things that, you know, people would find offensive, they actually agreed to take and put the book back behind, you know, back behind their desk, or whatever, and if somebody come in and ask for it, you know, and they were of age, because this is one that really needed to be 18 years old to check it out. They had to have an ID, or they had to have their parent. I mean, if it was somebody that's 10 years old, or 5 years old, and the parent wanted them to read it, well, they could come and check it out themselves. So that was just something that...
That's what we've gotten, pretty much that same procedure. That we need, we listed at the very bottom, recommendations. You can say proper cataloging according to age range, or restricted area that has, that they need parental permission or consent to check them out. That's the recommendation.
And that's exactly what we did in 2011, yeah. And it worked so far, I mean, it worked well. And that was probably about, best I remember, there was about 12 hours of meeting time and discussion to come to that point.
I think one of the bigger issues on this is where they're displayed.
Yes.
A kid could just walk in there and see them. They don't have their parents really knowing, and not even check, they have to have their parents to check them out. So that's why we said, "Look, maybe a different area, a different cataloging area, maybe a restricted area that they have to have parental consent to check out, and leave it up to the parents." But what we put in this memo is very similar to what you described that we did before.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vowles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I'm correct, the motion on the floor is whether or not to schedule a public hearing. And I appreciate Commissioner Allen making that motion. I think we ought to have a public hearing, because if we don't have a public hearing to where I can hear people's opinions and they can hear mine, I'll base my decision and that on my opinions I've already got. And one way or another, I'm going to be upsetting some people if I do that. So I'd very much like to see a public hearing set. Now, if we're not going to do that, if a majority of commissioners don't feel that's appropriate tonight, then the only other option I would know of is we go ahead and we discuss it and hash it all out right here tonight. And if we thought the public hearing over the zoning was taking a while, we ain't seen nothing yet. So I would highly recommend that we vote to schedule a public hearing, so that not only we can discuss this, but we can have people from our districts come and discuss these matters. I don't know about you all, I've gotten several emails. Most of the emails I received were not from my district, but the people that I spoke to in my district was in favor of removing the books totally. I had to discuss that issue with them and told them that there would be a process in place like Commissioner Isbell just described, hopefully. But I believe a public hearing is the right course of action at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah. Commissioner Mays was asking about when was this brought before commission in some way. It's been discussed at the library board meetings, there have been several people there, different, you know, several groups there, you know, debating back and forth about these materials. I feel like it has risen to the commission, and like Commissioner Vowles has said, we can hash this out tonight. I am prepared to do that. I have the information on these books. Or we could do it at a public hearing where both sides can really, you know, hash it out, and we can listen carefully. I'm all about listening, and we need to really, you know, look at or understand how the other parents feel about books being on display in, you know, taxpayer-funded libraries where their children can see these books. What is the solution? I'm kind of like, what I'm hearing is that they should be removed. So, but we need to let people have the opportunity to really talk about these issues in an open and fair... and fair debate.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Chair, is the...
Point of order, we still don't have a motion on it.
Yes, he did. We got, we got a motion. He didn't enter it in, but he made the motion.
So, we have a motion in the second, and that motion in the second is to schedule a public hearing?
To have, whether to have a public hearing, yes.
Do you say is the library board a body that can hold public hearings?
I have to look at the resolution that we set up for them. You don't necessarily have to have that explicit language. All our boards and committees are open to the public, and anybody can come forward. And I've never seen a board or committee say, "You can't speak." And that's what happened at the first one that we had.
So, every meeting is essentially a public hearing?
Public hearing portion. I think they had close to a hundred and fifty people, the first one. And it was not necessarily a polarized group. And it was surprisingly enough, the people that were against the books, most of them said, "Hey, we're not here to ban books. We're here to put them in the proper category, the proper classification." And that's where they came down. Other people said, "Hey, look, it's a parental issue. It's a moral issue. Leave it in the parents' hands. Don't interfere, whatever the case is, and they may be for against the books, but don't interfere with my right to allow my child to look at whatever books I think is appropriate to them." So, you got a, a lot of different facets to this issue. It's not necessarily, "Hey, we want to ban this book." And most of the reverends that came there and spoke, in fact, one very eloquent speaker said, "Look, hey, this is not about banning books. It's about keeping them out of the hands of the children without parental consent and not pushing them on our kids." And, but anyway, back to your question, yes, any member of the public can come and address the library board or any of our committees. Most of them all have time on their agenda for citizens to speak. And that's how this actually developed, was allowing people to speak to the library board.
As long as we have this process in place, I will not be in favor of, of a commissioned public hearing. I think, I think the First Amendment is, is just as important as the Second Amendment, which is, has a, a great deal of controversy. This is obviously starting to become a controversial issue too. But the First Amendment is just as important, and I support that fully.
Commissioner Varen.
As I said, we've got a process to deal with these sort of things. And just because you don't like the ruling doesn't mean that you go behind the back and try to quash it another way. There are thousands of books in that library, and we'll be here from here to eternity if we're going to go through every one of them.
Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I have a question for Mr. Jaeger.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand, if I understand the law correctly, if there is a book in the library that is deemed obscene, and there, it, it comes with a misdemeanor charge, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. You can't loan, you can't rent, you can't do anything as far as obscenity is concerned. In fact, it touches on several statutes.
So, the packet that we received had some books that I believe would probably border on that...
I think you're correct, ma'am.
Okay. So...
The illustrations too, the, the illustrations, I think, were very offensive on one of them that I saw.
Okay.
But that's not been referred to my office, let's be clear.
So, if someone were to bring charges, this misdemeanor, if someone was to press the issue and bring charges, who would be sued? The librarian?
Okay, you're talking about two different things. Criminal charges, that's brought by the district attorney general through that process. A lawsuit, who would be sued? Probably the members of the library board in Anderson County also.
So, Anderson County would be included in that lawsuit?
I would think so, ma'am, because we...
And that would be the members of this body, this legislative body?
All of Anderson County, the entity. It's not, not necessarily anything this body has done. The library board resolution was created, I want to think '08 is when I did it.
Okay.
But Anderson County, the entity, would probably be involved in that.
And so, this body is responsible for financial, the money?
You speak for the county, ma'am.
Speak for the county.
And you're correct on the financials, yes, ma'am.
All right. So, we do bear some responsibility?
Yes, ma'am.
Not just the library board, and not just the librarian?
Yeah, your oversight, you created that library board.
Thank you.
Mr. McCainy.
Is the motion for the county commission to hold a public hearing or the library board?
For the county commission to hold a public hearing.
Well, again, I'd, I'd have to be opposed to that, because I don't know enough about it to even be discussing it. I think the library board, and you're, you're on the board, right?
Yeah.
You're on the library board.
Chair.
I think they should be the ones to hold a public hearing. They're the ones that'd be making the decision to recommend whatever to the librarian. And I, I don't want to be in the position of micromanaging another department. So, I would be opposed to the motion for this county commission to hold a public hearing. But I'd be all in favor of asking the library board to hold a public hearing.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, let me speak for a second, Chairman. And I, I think maybe in the motion, that's what I was thinking that it was, is it was a joint effort. Because I was at the first library board meeting, I couldn't make the second one, but I got to watch it. And, and that's what it was, is a lot of information came out. And like I said before, this is another way to educate the public or let them know what's going on, and give them the opportunity to express their opinion. So, I think it's both people together, library board and county commission, and it's open to everybody that wants to come. Because, you know, I've had, just like Commissioner Val, you know, the people in, in our district is totally against it. And, but you're going to see people from the other parts of the county see things a different way. But it's just all about educating and being transparent. Thank you.
Mr. Foster.
So, just kind of clarification. So, I'm assuming the motion for a public hearing is, so we don't have the discussion tonight with the crowd that's here, to give it a more of a forum to have this conversation? Is that the intent of the motion? Or, because we've got a crowd here that wants to speak on this issue. So, anytime we have a big crowd, we have a meeting with an agenda that we haven't got to yet. Usually, we try to send that to a public hearing for the point of, to have that conversation. So, to talk about what they want to talk about tonight instead of at the county commission meeting. So, if that's the case, I'm supportive of having a public hearing, just because we don't have time to get through the crowd that's here tonight.
Mr. Smallridge.
Right. I have a question. Does the library board has a, have a process when someone objects to a book?
Yes, sir.
I assume that they do.
That's what I was describing up there.
So, if, if we have that process, anyone can take advantage of it. I think we have an excellent legal opinion that spells out what potentially is obscene. I think it pins things down pretty well. I'm not sure we need a, at this point, maybe, I'm not sure we need a public hearing. I do think it'd be a good idea for the, for the library board to go ahead with a, a hearing and, and review if there are a lot of questions. But, you know, at this point, I, I can't support a public hearing.
I would like for the library board to get a copy of the books that were handed out, copied tonight, because they're not involved, in our opinion, came from our office. Let them start looking at it, see if they want to go ahead and send it to their book review committee, see if they need a legal opinion, let's see if the system works there. It's worked so far. But I, I do believe they need a chance to look at it. The library board is like a lot of our committees, they probably don't know every book that's on the shelf in that library. And a lot of the, a lot of the variety of books there are left up to the librarian to order. So, I think it's, we at least, whether you vote for a public hearing tonight or not, I'm all for the public speaking. But I do think we need to give the library board a chance to take a look at these books and see if they take action on their own. That's what they're there for, that's why we put them in place. But if you choose to have a public hearing, that's fine, I'm all for it. But I do want the library board to have a take a look at these books. They're all new to me, I don't think they're aware of them. And see how they handle that.
The, the next library board meeting is at Rocky Top Library, March 9th, at 5:30. And we do, we'll still have a public comments section and everything.
Right, you do that always.
Yeah, we do that each, every month.
Commissioner Vandegrift.
So, I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Mays's question. Actually, I guess I have two questions. One is, how would this public meeting differ from what we normally have every month on the library board? And then, two, if we did have a public meeting, what would be the parameters or the agenda for that meeting? Would it be a free-for-all, anybody could come and speak about anything? Or is there a specific agenda that would be addressed?
I think you need to realize that if you hold a public hearing separate, just a public hearing, no votes can be taken.
Right.
If the library board has an open session, allows citizens to speak, that's a publicly noticed meeting, they can take a vote on anything at that point. So, the public hearing would be just to allow people a voice on the issue, but no votes could be taken. If you have it here, I would assume you would refer any findings that you see back to the library board, for, for them to be allowed to say, "Hey, just take this off the shelf. Let's put this in a catalog area that's appropriate with age restrictions, consent restrictions, parental guidance restrictions." But I don't think this, this body here, and I could be wrong, wants to go through each and every one of these books and say, "Ban this book, ban this book." That doesn't seem to be popular around the country, and certainly in our state. You're seeing it right now in Nashville. But there is books that may, may...
Mayor Frank.
So, I had a citizen ask if they could speak during this portion. And at the beginning of the meeting, it was noted that this issue was on the agenda, and you opened public comments for any item not on the agenda. Just for clarification, should citizens speak now?
Uh, yeah, I plan...
Or should, if there is a vote and there is a public hearing, then everyone goes to the public hearing? Or if there's a no vote, would they be afforded an opportunity? So, I guess from a parliamentary standpoint, what would be the procedure for tonight's meeting?
Yeah, well, I guess my plan, we've got sixteen people signed up to speak on the library, so I, I had thought they could speak after the commissioners were, were done, we'd go with them before we took the vote, so they could, they could hear. But what's the best, what's the cleanest way?
They've been promised to speak.
Well, I promised to let them speak, but is, should we, we should let them speak before we vote, I guess is my...
That's usually part of the deliberations.
That's probably the best way to do it.
Once you have a motion in the second, then the issue's on the floor.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, thank you. The, the legal memorandum was just for three or four books, right? It wasn't for...
Just three books.
Three books, yeah.
They're named in it.
Exactly, yeah. And there's a bigger issue with other books too, that people are concerned about. And mostly, you have a packet there that talks about those books too. I do think that people have come here expecting to speak on the issue, from both sides too. So, I think that we should really get around to that and allow people that want to speak to the issue to go ahead and speak to the issue. But I am all for a public, public forum hearing to really talk about these things. And I don't see why you have to go back to, to the library board to have them do it. Just schedule a public hearing on this issue. The library board can come, absolutely, and let's have the citizens and the parents, you know, talk about these issues at the public hearing.
Commissioner Mays.
You know, we've talked a lot about since September, our rules, stick into procedures, stick into processes. And I, I just don't want to be the commission that circumvents any process. If the library board looks at these and says, "We're tossing them, or putting them in the canister," hey, I'm, okay, great. But my question is, is have the library board been given these books and had an opportunity to weigh in on them?
No, we've not.
Will they be given that opportunity prior to a public hearing?
Well, sorry, if...
I mean, I, I guess, I guess the point is, for me, is if that process is in place, I don't think we really do any other committee that way.
Just for everyone's information, let me let Mariah Webb, she's the director of the Clinton Library, let, just kind of explain the reconsider, the reconsideration process.
Reconsideration process, sure. And I have copies of our collection development policy here for you guys. I only brought four, I'm sorry, I didn't think I would have to pass them out. That, it contains our reconsideration policy. So, how reconsideration typically works is somebody brings a reconsideration form, which you can find here, and you can also find on our website. They have to fill it out completely and turn it in to me, at which point I then send an email out to the library board, or my fellow directors send an email out to the library, to the library board, depending on whose collection the book is in. And then, once the library board meets, they put together a subcommittee, usually consisting of one director, one other employee, and one library board member, at which point we read the material in question in its entirety. And then, we make a decision. We sit down, we have a meeting, and I, and then the director issues an opinion to the complainant. If they do not like that decision, then it goes back to the entire library board, at which point the entire library board has to read the materials in its entirety before a decision is made. I have our collection development policy here. I don't, like I said, I only brought four copies, I'm sorry.
And the complainant has to read the book that they're...
Yes, the complainant is supposed to read the book in its entirety as well.
And Mr. Chairman, again, I'm not, I am not sitting up here giving my opinion on the books, that is not my intent at all tonight. And I don't want to speak about, of any of those tonight. I guess I am just, you know, if, if Brian in IT comes up with a spamware software to put on their computers and we don't like, are we just going to bring it to the county commission, or are we just going to go to the IT committee? I guess I just want to use these committees and these boards appropriately is really my desire. And I would hope, I just hope that we can get this in front of the library board and allow that process to play itself out before, because again, I don't, I do not want this to be some political football that we have to start throwing around for the next year unnecessarily.
Okay, let me get Commissioner Val, and then I want to start getting people from the, the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, before you step back, got a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Since you've been over there at the library, how many of those forms have been filled out by complainants?
Three.
Guess, just a guess.
Three.
Three?
Three.
Okay. And how many of those have you all reviewed and said, "You know what, the complainants are out, we need to remove these books"?
Oh, I take it back, four. But one hasn't gone through process yet.
Okay.
We haven't removed any since I've been there.
Thank you, ma'am. Going to Commissioner Mays's point, and I get where he's coming from, I'm probably one of the biggest advocates of committees on the board at this time. I get very upset when something doesn't come through a committee and winds up on commission's agenda, although I do understand there are some needs for that. I think we also have to weigh that out versus our constituents notifying us that they want us to look into something or to take some kind of action. If Commissioner Mays hasn't gotten any of those phone calls or emails, and, and I, I get that, that's fine.
Well, I've had plenty.
So, to me, that is notification to us, that our constituents are asking us to do something, whether the library board has done something or not. We, as commissioners, still have an obligation to our residents to take action, if at all possible, when they ask us to do so. So, I'll, that's my second time speaking, I'll leave it there.
Commissioner, really quick, if I may, just real quick. And I agree with Commissioner Val wholeheartedly. But I, I go back to the days that commission would absolutely rate Nathan Sweet over the coals, standing right there at that podium. And it sometimes was just Diet Committee. And how, if he, he never got the opportunity to jump up and into full commission, because I've been at some commission meetings where that's happened, and everybody lived and died by the committee. Whatever the committee decided is what, is what, is what happened. I just want everybody in all boards and all committees to be treated fairly, whether it be the library board, whether it be operations, or everything in between. I have had several phone calls, they started yesterday. They started yesterday and they ended as soon as I walked in the door here tonight. And I got a text message during the public hearing earlier. But this has not been some, you know, hair-on-fire issue that I've been dealing with since September, and maybe some of you have. But I, I don't think that most of you have, because again, we've not had any citizens that come before us on stuff that's not on the agenda. Again, all I ask is that we respect the... Again, all I ask is that we respect the, is that we respect the process and respect the committee.
Commissioner McCamey and then Palmer.
Mr. Chairman, the item on the agenda is to schedule a public hearing for discussion of library book selections. And if we're going to have a public hearing here tonight, I think it's out of order because it's not been advertised as a public hearing. And if we're going to allow people to speak for or against whatever, I think we're violating our own rules. And I think that, you know, we ought to stick to what's on the agenda. Schedule a public hearing, and there's a motion on the floor and a second to schedule a public hearing. And I think that's what we should be voting on, not what, not what we're all, we're discussing different books that I've not had an opportunity to look at yet.
Well, if the public hearing gets voted down, they're going to want to speak.
Well, are they here to speak on whether or not we should have a public hearing? I mean, that should be the only thing, I don't...
They're here to discuss, yeah.
Yeah, and that motion has been made already and a second, you know. So, I call for a question on the motion.
Say. All right, or can we vote?
I don't think so.
I don't know if he's got the...
Can I get a clarification? Is the motion to have a public hearing about the process or a public hearing for people to speak if we're going to have a public hearing? Because I feel like there's two different topics being talked about.
It's just a, it's a public hearing on the contents of the library, I think. Well, we haven't scheduled it yet, that's part of it.
That's the motion, is to schedule a public hearing for discussion of library book selections.
I think the moderator and the topic, how it's going to be handled, just that it should be determined, because all this is, is we're agreeing to let all the people, everybody wants to speak, whatever they want to talk about, for or against. It just gives them another opportunity to come and speak.
I don't think we ought to be discussing that tonight unless they want to discuss, you know, whether or not we want to have a public hearing. That's what's on the agenda, and that's all that we should be talking about. Not whether or not we should, you know...
I think, has everybody that's signed in for the library, is this to speak about a public hearing? Is that, what, I think that's more or less what we want to, we want to talk about, either advocate for or against county commission having a public hearing, is what it sounds like.
So, we called question, there's no more discussion, right? I just need clarification on that. Can you amend?
We have to vote to see if we're going to stop debate.
Okay.
And can we, yeah, we gotta vote, we're supposed to gotta vote.
To vote in favor of stopping debate, right, all right. All those...
To stop debate.
To stop the debate.
To stop debate, okay.
All those in favor of stopping debate?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I vote no, okay, but it looks like the ayes have it on that, two ayes. So, we stopped debate, okay, now we're going to vote on whether or not to have a public hearing. Can we, we can't go to the board yet, okay. All those in favor of having, of county commission, can we go to the board? Okay, mine can't.
I don't, I don't have that, I don't have that. I don't have that.
Our equipment locked up earlier, that's why we're having an issue. Who doesn't have...
Take it to the I.T. committee, let's fix that.
Is this, is this, is that ready to go?
It's ready.
Okay.
But I can't vote.
He's...
Annette, can you call the roll, can you do a roll call vote while we're working on this?
I got a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Can you, now that the debate ends, can you make an amendment or, I can't...
Well, I'm not the chairman.
Yeah, that's...
An amendment to call for the question?
No, I'm, amendment to call the question, we called question to end the debate, but can you amend the motion that's on the table?
Sure.
I don't think the motion, I think the motion he made, that's my one clarification, is to have a public hearing on this topic. And I think most of us want to have a public hearing, let people speak to decide if we're going to have a public hearing. And that's my motion to amend that we have a public hearing to decide if we're going to have a public hearing on the processes, because I think that's what you want to have, is a public hearing on the processes.
No, I want to have a public hearing as specified here to discuss the library book selection, not the process.
Well, sorry, I'll clarify on that.
We do have some dates available.
Does everybody understand the motion?
No.
It's to have a public hearing on the contents of the county libraries, right?
Yes, yes.
All right, okay.
It will be discussing specific books, not...
It's a public hearing, yes.
I haven't been to church.
Well, it depends on who comes to the public hearing and what books they're going to... I mean, somebody might want to challenge the Bible, I don't know what, we'll see what happens when they come to the public hearing. Okay, Annette, can you call the roll? This is to vote whether to have a public hearing.
Commissioner Verrin?
No.
Mr. Denneberg?
No.
Mr. Vandergrift? No. Mr. Isbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wondell? Mr. Doacham?
No.
Mr. Yager?
No.
Mr. Vowles?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Robert, can I, Mr. McCamey?
No.
Mr. Smallrich?
No.
Mr. May?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. White?
No.
And Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Eleven, no, four ayes and one ayes.
Now, since I did ask the people that wanted to speak on the library to wait until this came up, I would like to give them an opportunity to address commission, especially since there's not going to be a public hearing. So, if you're here to talk about the library issue, I'm going to go through the, go through the list. Like Commissioner Vowles said earlier, if you've already heard your point get made, try to respect the time and everything, keep your remarks to the commission. Please don't applaud either side back and forth, so we can just keep moving. So, we'll start with Ms. Ginger Nunamaker, if you want to come and state your name and address to the podium.
Ginger Nunamaker, South Hickory Lane, Oak Ridge. We are planning to do, to do some, we call it reconsideration.
I'd rather not say that.
We can't say it.
Yeah, we don't want to.
We don't want to.
No, brother. Brother, yeah. We, the taxpayers, are unwittingly funding ideologically-driven pornography in libraries. Let me show you.
Can you start the timer, Brian?
They, yeah. These are just a few of the pornographic selections of county-funded pornography found in our libraries. The leftists are hell-bent on reeducating your children. Here's a post on Facebook by someone named Wendy Varon, whom you may be familiar with. Sad that people want to force their beliefs on everyone, shame that they just can't be next to their children in the library, and if the child looks at a book that is different, they can see as an opportunity to have a discussion. Library is a place to learn many viewpoints and opened minds, it is not a church. Well, this is a quote from the original post that was done under the library video from the library board. They say it's not a church, yet they preach their gender-bending immoral smut in the name of freedom. And you who are funding it aren't allowed to challenge it. There is no conversation you could have with your child about this. Hold up, the book, Let's Talk About It, page 164. This encourages children to visit pornographic websites and seek advice from strangers on the internet and do research and pay for their porn, and refers to porn as a quote-unquote "fun sugary treat" while depicting gateway sexual acts. This is not abstinent sex education. Page 91, you cannot teach abstinence with these pictures. Abstinence is the rule of thumb for sex education in Tennessee law. You cannot teach abstinence with this. Here they are teaching children to send naughty masterpieces around the world and how to protect the predators by editing their photos. What conversation do you suggest we have about this with our innocent children? Books in our taxpayer-funded libraries make the jobs of human and child traffickers easier. This is basically a how-to guide on how to become a victim of a sex predator. Your President Biden wouldn't read from our beloved Dr. Seuss book on National Reading Day, which mentions Eskimos, but promotes this kind of smut as acceptable to minors. Books by Dr. Seuss teach children to love reading. This smut teaches children how to masturbate and watch porn. No one of you on this board would defend taxpayer-funded child abuse. Thank you.
Donna Maloney.
Mayor Frank, I just have a question. It was not, it's not in the contract, I wanted to ask a question more of the, to the board.
Yeah, ask the chairman, I thought you wanted to speak, just ask the chairman.
Chairman, if you want me to go up there?
We'll give you, yeah, I'll put your name down, Mr. Tugel, we'll give you a chance to speak. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Donna Maloney. I live at 111 Timura Drive in Oak Ridge. And I came here this evening wanting to champion the First Amendment and wanting to tell the parents that if they don't like what they're seeing, don't look at it. However, I am going to tell you, you have a process. You have a very good process. And if you circumvent that process, you're going to do irreparable harm. Let the board do what it does, refer your constituents to the board when they call you. You have a process, please abide by it.
Greg Smith. State your name and address, please.
My name's Greg Smith, I'm at 145 Montana Avenue in Oak Ridge. And this is my first council meeting, and it's been very interesting tonight. I came when I first heard about censorship essentially in the library, and it worried me. And I looked up the books in question that had been reviewed, those three books in particular. And personally, I don't find anything offensive. I have a lot of friends and family who are trans, gay, lesbian, binary, the whole list that's in the book. And I think these are, look like good tools to me for children, and for families, and for adults even. So, I would just like to echo them that I do support the process. I do support the library board and the library to look at what they know best. Thank you.
Krista Brelsford. Okay. Michelle Dyken-Dicken.
Hi, my name is Michelle Dyken. I live at 109 Baylor Drive in Anderson County in Oak Ridge. My husband and I reside in Anderson County and have two daughters, ages seven and nine, who frequently visit the local library. I came here today to defend access to information and encourage you to, anytime there's an occasion to vote, to vote against banning books from our public library. There's a reason that the library board thoroughly reads every book. I encourage you not to take some of these opinions at face value, like the lady that spoke first with the graphic illustrations, but to read these books yourselves in context. Reading, researching, and learning in general is meant to expand our ideas and our thoughts and engage us in debate, not just to confirm our bias. The people who want to ban books are trying to restrict freedom of thought and free speech. And what are they so afraid of? Because no one is forced to check a book out of the library or to let their child check a book out of the library. Is it a coincidence that people who want to ban books are targeting books that feature LGBTQ characters? It's discrimination, full stop. Calling a children's book pornographic or accusing it of grooming children just for featuring gay parents is pure hate. Everyone, gay, straight, Republican, Democrat, black, brown, and white, deserves representation in our libraries. Our LGBTQ population in Anderson County are citizens who pay taxes and contribute to our communities just like everyone else, and they do not deserve to be targeted. Representation matters, even if it makes someone else uncomfortable. You may hear arguments today using the Bible to justify the banning of these books. In this country, we're supposed to be guaranteed a separation of church and state because we all don't practice the same religion. Everyone should have the right to practice any faith that they desire, but they do not have the right to use their particular religious beliefs to decide which books should be available to the public in a taxpayer-funded library. If your religion dictates that you don't read certain books, then don't check them out of the library. A poll recently taken by Heart Research Associates on behalf of the American Library Association nationwide showed that a large majority of voters, including 75% of Democrats and 70% of Republicans, were opposed to efforts to remove books from their local libraries. Those who want to ban books are a very vocal minority of voters. Groups that ban books and limit access to information end up on the wrong side of history. And I encourage you with every motion to vote against censorship. For the remainder of my time, I would like to read from one of the books that has been up for debate. No, is my time?
About, yeah, probably not.
All right. It's really cute.
Soraya Baj. Please state your name and address.
So, she, my name is Soraya, I live at 136 Pembroke in Oak Ridge. And to add to what she said so very eloquently, I want to say that there are all kinds of family dynamics, and parents that would check out these types of books would want that for their children, because that's why they would check them out for their kids. Banning books seems kind of ridiculous when you consider we have the internet, that any kid, anywhere with a phone or computer can look up anything a hundred million times worse than you could ever find in a library. I think banning books is backwards thinking, and we should never go back. And for the remainder of my time, I will read one of the books that is supposed to be on the banning list. It's called Grandpa's Camper. Every summer, I go to stay at my granddad's house by the sea. It's a pretty old college with bookshelves packed to the brim with interesting things from granddad's travels, a lot of brilliant places to play hide-and-seek. In the garden, granddad grows all kinds of fruits and vegetables. But my favorite thing to do at granddad's house is snuggle up on the sofa and listen as granddad tells me about all of the amazing places he and gramps would explore. Your gramps was quite the adventurer, he was tall and handsome and excellent at so many things. Tidiness was not one of them, and it's a picture of him being an artist. Soon after we met, he invited me on holiday, so we set off in his camper to the seaside. In the daytime, we surfed, ate fish and chips, and we had a sandcastle competition. I think I won. Then, in the evenings, we'd have bonfires. We had a sandcastle competition? I think I won, okay. Can you show the pics of that surfing? It's of two men, they're enjoying fish and chips, they're making a sandcastle, they're learning to surf, they're walking on the beach. Pretty innocent stuff, yeah, okay. And then, in the evenings, we'd have bonfires on the beach and watch the tide going in and out of the bay, enjoying beautiful sunset, lovely illustrations. Probably a pretty good example for fun things to do with kids. One afternoon, gramps said to me, there are so many wonderful things in this world, and I want you to see them all, and that's exactly what we did. Gramps always wanted to visit the city, so that's where we went first. We drove through dark tunnels, over fancy bridges, and in between towering skyscrapers. Everywhere was full of life, there were so many people, so many animals, and so many things to see. It was amazing, we saw lots of different kinds of homes, from high-rise flats to terraces and townhouses. But we were happy with our little home on wheels, which we could take wherever we pleased.
Time's, time's up, thank you. Thank you. Next, we got Ann Garcia. Phil, state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Ann Garcia. I live at 120 Outer Drive in Oak Ridge. And I just want to thank the Commission at this point for their vote. I really believe that the appropriate procedure for discussions of books in the library is to go through the Library Committee. And thank you for that consideration.
Melissa Brown.
I'm Melissa Brown. I live at 265 Dusty Lane in Powell, and I too want to thank the Commission for your vote. I would also like everyone to consider the incredible burden you're putting on the well-educated librarian who runs our library. She has many more responsibilities besides vetting books that are already vetted through a distinctive process that uses a wide range of, I'm not a librarian, so I'm unaware of the process, but there are several different review systems that she uses to choose books to come into the library. This is not her personal opinion that she uses. It's based on, one, a university degree that she has in library sciences, which is a professional degree for which she was hired to do this job. And, two, she uses a set of professional standards to choose books to represent a wide range of literature available to all of your constituents in Anderson County, not just a small group of people who want a limited amount of knowledge available to us. So thank you again for your vote.
Nathan Mullins.
Well, I want to actually speak to you from the heart. I spent many hours compiling this speech, and I just got to put it to the side so that I can let you know what you don't actually know yet. I think it's very important that y'all understand, I've given a flash drive to Mr. Allen prior to the meeting, and what you're not aware of is that the groups in question representing the librarians, the directors of the Clinton and the Rocky Top Library, met covertly in private with some of their support, some of their agencies of support. And I happened to get private, and Tennessee were allowed to record things, as long as you use them for legal purposes. And what I have is the verbatim quotations from Mariah Webb, along with the director of Rocky Top, saying that if you block any of the books in her library, she has a grand book called The Intellectual's Guide to Freedom, that all she has to do is have her friends, constituents of the director of the Rocky Top Library, come to her, and she's going to suggest books that are at least as controversial, if not more so. All they have to do is request them into the library. You will not know that they are there. So barring these three books, this covert group said, if you remove these books, they'll replace them with worse ones, meeting their agenda standards, you'll never know about it. And they're on this flash drive quoting this, which is a legal recording. I have over two hours of covert recordings of these people threatening legislators, inspiring their constituents to go get in their faces. For instance, Randy McNally, who was confronted by the Rocky Top Director Library friends, and to this very day, he has had to spend an extra, a huge amount of money on private security, having federal agents escort him in and out of Oak Ridge to his home because of the way they confronted Randy McNally at a prior meeting. They scared him, they rattled him, and to this day, he's had to train his own security people and then bump to a federal agent. So what I'm trying to share with y'all, the significance of not brushing and glossing over this and my beautiful speech, okay? I'm being facetious. What I'm trying to tell you is, the agenda is already ahead of you. If you remove anything, they've got 10 more books to replace it that they approve of and we will never know about. That's why it's important that we have these meetings. It's not about the gay thing.
Time's up, Mr. Mullins. Thank you. Edward Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan.
He's gone.
Okay. Susan Garew Ecki.
My name is Susan Garew Ecki. I live at 114 Pathfinder Lane in Andersonville. Ladies and gentlemen of the County Commission, thank you so much for this opportunity to talk to you. I'm a library user and a library supporter. I'm a member of Friends of the Library. I have cards from the Clinton branch and the Norris branch, and also a library in Virginia where my parents live. And I would like to say I'm very concerned about this attempt to subvert a process that is in place for consideration of books. I personally am not in favor of banning books. I think that the library should be part of the free exchange of ideas for the entire population, and that we don't always agree with all of these ideas. I know there are some I disagree with quite strongly as well. What I see about this process is that it has been politicized, and we hear about this, where constituents all over the country are encouraged to ask local libraries to ban certain books, and they're provided with names of these books. And it turns into a slippery slope, because it's not just books about gender identity or sex education. It's books about race and about other issues that have become controversial. And as a scientist, you know, I look at religious people vehemently denying evolution. I see people who deny climate change. It concerns me that at some point, they're going to be asking for books that show scientific facts about issues like these banned as well, not just social justice issues and issues around gender identity. I think it's quite clear that across the population, there are issues with gender identity, and they don't discriminate based on your political orientation. So I just would like to say, I'd like to see this process kept in the Library Board. It doesn't need to be addressed by the County Commission. And thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. John Jarville.
My name is John Teruzel. I live at 107 West Overlook Drive in Oak Ridge, Anderson County. I've lived there for seven years with my husband, and we both have library cards, both here at Clinton and in Oak Ridge, and I'm a member of Friends of the Libraries. I'm also co-chair of PFLAG Oak Ridge Parents, Friends, and Families of Lesbians and Gays. It's a support group that's internationally been around for about 40 years, and we provide support for members of the LGBTQ population, their families and friends, and we have monthly meetings in Oak Ridge. I will say that as a gay man growing up in the 1960s, and I will add the fact that I in no way chose to be a gay man any more than my siblings chose to be straight, there were absolutely no role models for an LGBTQ person growing up, in print, in TV, in society, in movies, or anywhere else. That led to a great deal of depression and even suicide for some people. And the fact that books like these would be available in libraries today may help some young people through their early life issues in being LGBTQ. I will also have to respond to Mr. Mullins in his recording of the covert group, which was our PFLAG meeting last week. Because it's a support group where young people are discussing issues of their own sexuality and things that are very private, it's much, much like an AA meeting. At every meeting, we request nobody record or take any pictures, because people are discussing very private things. And once again, Mr. Mullins came to one of our meetings and recorded it without letting us know. So I would like you to take that recording off of your record. Thank you very much.
Mr., or, excuse me, Laura Leprad.
I'm Laura Leprad. I live at 111 Cherry Oak Drive in Oak Ridge. And I just want to thank you for your vote tonight and just say that I have been impressed so far as a newer resident of the area of how the process of the Library Board has worked. I feel like there was a forum for us to be able to come and show our support for either side of the issue, and that process is working. The other thing I would like to say is, I'm not here to get in anybody's face. I'm here as the mother of a child who is exploring where she fits in this world. And my job as her parent is to create safe spaces for her. And one of those places that has been a huge gift for us is books. And I know for me, as a child, when I was going through traumatic things, finding books sometimes was the only thing where I felt seen or understood. And there are a lot of kids who, whose parents would love to sit with them in that and learn with them in that. I'm okay to admit I'm wrong about my child. She knows herself best and where she fits in that spectrum. And I think as a parent, that's one of the greatest gifts I can give her, is to show her that I'm okay to be wrong about what I thought the world order was about gender or her identity, and to create a space where she can be fully loved and accepted, at least somewhere. And having access to books that, to me, books are just in a public space, we should all be represented there. And I want my child to find herself on the shelves, wherever those shelves may be. And I want to be the one making the decision about what I think is appropriate for her to read or not. So thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Jones.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joshua Jones. I live at 566 Granite Road. I just want to thank everybody for this meeting tonight. I've learned a lot. I'm a fairly new resident to the Clinton and Anderson County areas. I didn't know a whole lot about the Library Board. I went to the Library Board meeting, I think it was last month, and had an opportunity to speak, had an opportunity to watch the process. I just want to thank everybody who has in the past and is currently serving on the Library Board. I, in no way, while I would differ with the conclusions of the Library Board members, I don't differ with them as people. I just simply differ with their worldview conclusions. And I want to share that upfront as a Christian and a believer in Jesus Christ. I believe, as many parents have shared, that they believe in creating safe spaces for their children. I believe in raising my children up in the discipline and instruction of the Lord. I also believe, as a believer and follower of Christ, that I'm to disciple the nations. And so what I want to bring to everyone's attention tonight is just simply, I'm not here to get in the way of a process. You guys have a process. If the process is working, let's follow the process. I'm down. Let's go. That's great. But what I would like to say is that I want everyone to have eyes wide open. Just last week in Spain, bestiality was legalized, as long as it doesn't hurt the animal, actually, is the conclusion of the legal side of that argument. Where are we going as a country and where are we going as a nation? If the Library Board decides that they want to keep books like this in the library, that's great. I'm just going to follow the advice of Thomas Jefferson, and my family and I are just going to vote with our feet. And I think the Library Board would probably encourage me to do so. So I'm totally okay with that and hope that that is just maybe a different perspective for everybody, since it was just really important, and I really appreciate that there's this freedom of speech. People can stand up here and say what is on their heart and what's on their mind. Someone took some time to read from a book that they really agreed with and believe in. I'm going to take from a moment and with the remaining time I have and read Psalm 2. "Why did the nations rage and the peoples meditate on a vain thing? The kings of the earth take their stand, and the rulers take counsel together against Yahweh and against his anointed, saying, 'Let us tear their fetters apart and cast their cords away from us.' He who sits in the heavens laughs; the Lord mocks them. Then he speaks to them in his anger and terrifies them in his fury, saying, 'But as for me, I have installed my king on Zion's hill.' I will surely tell of the decree of Yahweh. He said to me, 'You are my son; today I have begotten you. Ask of me, and I will surely give the nations as your inheritance, and the ends of the earth is your possession. You shall break them with a rod of iron; you shall shatter them in a potter's vessel.' So now, O kings, show insight. Take warning, judges of the earth; serve Yahweh with fear; rejoice with trembling; kiss the sun lest he become angry, and you perish in the way, for his wrath is quickly skindled. How blessed are all who take refuge in him.'" Thank you.
Carolyn Boswell.
I live at 150 Crescent Road in Norris, Tennessee, and I'm a member of the Library Board, so take your pot shots. Thank you for your vote tonight. I appreciate it. And I think we couldn't ask for a better display of diversity than we have in this room right now. And I think the library is here to serve each and every one of you. Thank you.
Carissa Owenby.
My name is Carissa Owenby. I live on Pine Street in Clinton. I'm a lifetime Anderson County resident, and I love this community. I think it's a great place. I think it's very welcoming. And I think when you start talking about book banning and censorship, it definitely brings the wrong message to a county. And so I'm glad that you chose to support the Library Board and their decision. They are the ones that should be most familiar with the policies and procedures at the library. So I do greatly thank those that stepped up and spoke up for them tonight. I did just want to take a minute to say, the Clinton Public Library is a marvelous place that services a large area in truly amazing ways, considering the budget, building limitations, and a sundry community. I emphasize the word "public" in its name. In serving the public, this means there will be a vast array of individuals with different beliefs, lifestyles, and reading selections. Our public library is not here to adhere to just one religion or one group of people. This country was based on freedom, and no group should be able to command what others can and cannot read. Book bans are detrimental to a society, a statement which has been proven time and time again throughout history in many different countries. To suggest that books about a select group of people be segregated out from where they are appropriately catalogued in the library's collection is appalling, even more so considering that mere steps away from the library is for one of the first goals to desegregate in the South stands. Think of the similarities in having a separate but equal section for a select group of books that represent certain individuals. I was fortunate to have the opportunity to work at the Clinton Public Library for a few years. One of the most rewarding aspects of working there was the diverse patrons that I interacted with on a daily basis. Anyone that came in could find something that spoke to them, that represented their lifestyle, and it was a warm and welcoming environment. A great library will have something to offend everyone. And I hope this Commission allows the Clinton Public Library to continue acting as a public library that services a large county with so many great individuals across multitude of religions, beliefs, and lifestyles. The Library Board has upheld the standards of the First Amendment and upheld the fact that the library is a place where all can find books. I hope the Commission will reflect on the importance of speaking up against book bans, censorship, and segregating books about a select group of people, and continue to respect the Library Board's decision. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Tuigle, did you want to come up and?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions and I have a statement. Is the library director, or aka librarian, I think, those are synonymous, an elected position or an appointed or hired position?
Hired, by the Library Board.
By the Board?
The Board hires the library directors, and then the directors hire their own staff under them.
So who, the Board themselves, is that a elected, are those elected positions?
It's, well, you're appointed to the board. I'm elected to commission, but then I'm appointed to the Library Board by commission. And there's two, each municipality has two library representatives, and then there's three at-large representatives for the county. So I'm one of the county at-large representatives.
My understanding is for each library district, there's two, I think, just like residents, right? The director for that Rocky Top or Norris or Clinton.
Well, the library director that works full-time, they can live wherever, but the board members, there has to be two Clinton city residents on the board, two Rocky Top residents, two Norris residents, and then three county.
Other than you, the commissioner, who's on the Library Board, are any of the other ones elected?
No, they're appointed by either their city council and then county commission.
Okay. And then does the library director or the librarian have the ultimate authority and decision on what books are taken in and removed?
No, not with the reconsideration process. If it's challenged, it would eventually go to the book review committee, and then the overall board would have the final.
But she could say, he or she can say no to every single reconsideration request, correct?
Well, I mean, if she denied it initially, then it could go to the board, and the board could make a decision. If the board voted and said, "Remove this book," then she would...
Okay, so the ultimate decision, it lies within the entirety of the board, then? That's, okay. And then as a public library funded by the public's dollars, has there been any consideration on having the decision-maker on what books are taken in and removed from our library represent that public opinion? It seems like there's only one elected person on this Library Board, namely the commissioner. So just some thoughts of what to consider, so...
Thank you. Yeah, if you want to come up, and then we'll close out the discussion.
Yes, hi. I wrote this lengthy speech, so I'm glad you allowed me to speak. Good evening. I'm Dr. Kevin Jennings, and I'm a resident of Clinton. I spoke at the previous library meeting on this subject about the Streisand Effect, in which people trying to remove something from public view inadvertently brings that thing more attention. The very act of trying to hide something brings it to light. Now, this crusade against books for children that discuss gender and gender identity is no different. I took it upon myself to gather some data from the libraries of Anderson and surrounding counties, and I'm happy to say that citizen interaction with these books has increased by 135 percent. Now, children all over East Tennessee have learned about gender more in recent months than they have in previous decades. As such, I support as many meetings as possible on the subject, as more attention from groups like this can only help bring attention to these books. But in addition, I am pledging tonight to put $500 of my own money into a fund to buy copies of any book that any level of government, including this one, forces from library shelves, and will give a copy of those books free of charge to any youth in the district who asks for one. So please, have meetings every day for the next century, but know that it will never result in a single child not accessing any book that they might need to read. Thank you. God bless America.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Frank, go ahead.
As someone who has been censored from the Clinton Public Library, I ran a blog for many years, frankly speaking, and that blog did publish columns that were regularly appearing in the Courier-News. But ironically, I was publishing in my local newspaper, but the Clinton Public Library banned my site as a hate site, and residents who wanted to view what I had written politically were not allowed to.
What year was that?
Oh, gosh. I wrote that blog up until I ran for election. I had numerous citizens reach out to me, and I just never chose to address it, so...
But that was before...
It was before, yes.
And before I was on the board.
Yes, oh, yes.
Because we would never censor you.
It was before, it was before I was elected to office. Yes, sir. I do want to say just one thing, that I can't sit there when I saw the pictures that were there. And this does not have anything to do with a choice of lifestyle. A child who is exposed to that, whether that child is questioning, or whether the child ends up choosing to be gay, or says they are born gay, excuse me. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can we have order?
Yeah, she was...
Am I different than any other speaker?
She didn't interrupt anybody when everyone else spoke, so...
Correct. What was displayed there with the cellphone, to me, is a problem, and I will take action as the mayor and do that report myself. Child trafficking is an issue. I follow this online. I am a contributor. It is active in the community. And what was displayed there was not what we talked about with a choice of lifestyle or, you know, exposing a child with parental consent. That was pornographic. And it was pretty clear to me, it was pornographic. And I think a lot of the commissioners who voted against a public hearing, your eyes were raised when you saw that picture. And so that is an issue. And I just want to say on the record, because it was brought here, that I will take action on that myself.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, people have been talking about banning books. I don't think that no one here wants to ban books, but as the mayor so eloquently spoke to the issue, there's some pornography. And if you have this here called "Let's Talk About It," if you turn to the first page... Excuse me, am I allowed to speak, or...
Well, the... Are we going back in circles, or...
I don't know.
I mean, I think the mayor said she's going to take some, move forward with a...
There's no motion on the floor.
Yes, I just wanted, because something was presented that does, I mean...
Shock the conscience.
Yes. Then I think I just needed to, someone on behalf of Anderson County Government needs to say, you know, we're going to look into this, and that's why I said that. And I don't think any child, you know, any child should be exposed to that, so...
Well, and I didn't catch the, which is it? "Let's Talk About It"?
Yeah, if you look at, let's, can we have some order here, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, let's, Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Over on page one, you can see the depiction of a cartoon character and what that character is doing. If you go and you turn to what I call page number three...
Yeah, we already saw those, so I think, and the mayor's going to act on that, so... But from what I understand, just for everybody's information, this is in Norris, right?
Yes.
And it's in the adult nonfiction?
Yes.
Yeah, if you want to come up, this is where the, just to, so this is not in a children's section of the library?
No. To my understanding, if the images that were on that board were from the books "Let's Talk About It" and "Gender Queer," which is also a book that has been brought up, both of those books are shelved in the adult section for adults. Just because they have pictures in them don't mean they're for children. So I don't know, I know Clinton has Gender Queer. It's also shelved in the adult section because it's an adult biographical memoir for adults.
Okay. Thank you. And that's our Norris Library Director, Kimberly Burge. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarity, the four "no" votes was not meant saying that we were for banning books. It was more to let people speak more on what we're doing now. Now, the same people that want to continue discussion can come to the Library Board, maybe 300 can come to the Library Board, and it may take two days to let them all speak. They can come to operations, they can come to this meeting every month...
Amen.
...if they want to speak. And that's what it was about, was letting people have the right to speak. That's what it was about. That's what I voted on, that's why I supported, not to suppress anybody's point of view either way. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, any of the books that were brought up tonight, what I thought was pretty graphic, they were not issued, we didn't issue opinion on there.
They haven't, they had not been...
No.
Challenged.
Our books were listed as three. They're in the opinion here, and they were not part of this other packet that came out today.
Okay. Commissioner Mace.
Yeah, I just briefly just want to state that, I don't want to speak on behalf of who voted against a public hearing, to lay at our feet that we do not care, or that we don't have an issue with what we saw tonight. Anything that characterizes that is incredibly misleading and very, it's frustrating. The reason I voted no in the public hearing was not to suppress anybody from having a chance to talk. That was not even close to the reason why. The reason why is I actually would like the Library Board to hold the public hearing under the purview in which they're allowed to do. We're allowed to go to those things. We're allowed to do anything like that. And for anyone to insinuate that, for anybody to vote against the public hearing tonight didn't care about Anderson County or anything like that is absolutely asinine. So I just wanted to say that, that my vote was a procedural vote, nothing more and nothing less. Anybody that wants to read into that, have at it. But that is why I voted the way I voted tonight.
Commissioner Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Norris Library Director, could you come back up to the podium, please? Got just a question. So the graphic pictures that were shown here tonight, they are in a book in the adult section of the Norris Library?
The "Let's Talk About It," which was the teen's guide, I reviewed that when I bought it because it was a patron request to purchase it. I put it in the adult section...
Can you explain what that means, please? I'm sorry.
So patrons, our library visitors who have cards with us can request for books if they would like to read them, and we will order them for purchase. Once it comes in, we do review them based on, like, what section we bought them from. With that particular book, I looked at it and I was like, oh, the imagery is a little bit more adult, so we put it in the adult section.
So where was it it was suggested to be?
It was suggested to be in the teen section, because it is a teen sexual health guide. Yes. However, I do, like, normally take the consideration of the publisher where it is supposed to be. That's usually adequate. This one I chose to put in adult...
Probably wasn't adequate.
Because I'm trying to do so.
Yeah.
And then with the other one, Gender Queer, was always meant to be an adult biographical memoir.
Okay. Director Jaeger? When a book is deemed obscene under TCA, does it matter if it's in the children's section or the adult section?
No, sir, it does not.
Okay. So I guess what we need to do at this point is especially that book be sent to the law director's office for a review. And if it's got to start at the Norris Public Library first to go through your process with the Library Board, I guess that's fine. I would have no objection to that. But I definitely want it to wind up in the law director's office for a legal opinion, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, we'll be meeting March 9th before the next commission meeting, so...
Yes, sir.
If that's all right with everybody, we'll make it an agenda item on the Library Board. We can go ahead and get the information to Jay, but...
So we need to provide for overflow parking?
Yes, and that'll be March 9th at the Rocky Top Library. 5:30.
Be over in the little athletic fields.
Yeah.
Any of the other books, you know, that the Library Board wants me to look at, I'd be glad to.
Commissioner Foster.
A couple of things. One, we'll offer up a community center, because I know Rocky Top Library is not large enough probably for the crowd that might be there, so let us know. We can offer up our community center for that meeting. To get on the agenda for that meeting, because I do feel like the group that want to have a public hearing, if they actually want to have a spot on the agenda deadline, and to bring a lot of the issues that they were bringing tonight, if we want to run through the Library Board, how do they get on the agenda and when's that deadline?
They can just email me.
Email you?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes, I do want to make sure that the discussion is broadened with the libraries. People did discuss and talk about the book, "Let's Talk About It," but then there are other books that I think need a wider discussion, and maybe those also need to be given to the law director, because they're pretty pornographic, and we as a body need to look at that very, very carefully. This is stuff that I think, if you look at this and you understand that we are allowing pornography, even in cartoon form, into taxpayer-funded libraries, and we should, you know, take this very, very seriously, particularly from the citizens of this great county. They're talking about this, and I'm glad that we're going to find some way to have a public hearing on this. Doesn't matter to me whether it's this commission or the Library Board, but someone needs to look at the pornography. This, what she, what the speaker showed was nothing compared to what's in the other materials here.
Commissioner Boacham.
I know we have a lot of people from Oak Ridge here tonight, and I want you to know that we have no, anything to do with the Oak Ridge Public Library. This is only for the county libraries. We, Oak Ridge Public Library is a city library, and it's dictated by Oak Ridge City Council. So a lot of the people that were here, I know you visit the Clinton Library, but I just wanted that to be on the record, that we can't do anything about the Oak Ridge Public Library.
Okay. If there's nothing else on the library discussion, we will, let's take a 10-minute break and we'll start, come back with a committee report.
I'm wearing it now. I was like, I can't stand this.
Oh, you've never seen those books before?
No. Haven't anybody's challenged us, so...
So let's say we're there, Charlie.
Haven't nobody's challenged us, so, so, so let's say, let's say you're challenged.[404.12]
Hand-wit issues in the, in the room, so if you're, if, if you're able to turn off your cellphone or get off the wifi, I think that'll help us, help our systems. We were having some issues with the, the voting system, and then I think Andy said there were some issues online. All right, we'll start with, we'll move on to committee reports. We'll start with the purchasing report by Finance Director Robbie Holbrook.
Thank you Chairman Anderson. First up on the purchasing agenda, contracts approved by the Law Director, there are nine of them. Six for Canon, one for Safe Industries, one for Lexus Neck, one for Autumny Today.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Contracts pending Law Director approval, which have all, both have been approved now. There are two of them, Safe Industries and American Test Center, seeking approval as a group.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under new business, there were two more contracts, both have been approved by the Law Director, High Tech Rescue and Rescue One, both EMA contracts.
Motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Oh, do you want to vote? Yes. Commissioner Vanegriff says yes.
All right, thank you. Under old business, just some information only, winning bid awards for two cars from EMA. Starting bids were $250 each, we, nine mil, $9,783.57 were the winning bids.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner Jaeger.
Yes, they do, and I don't need a motion for this. This is, we've already made a motion to sell them, and they've sold, we don't have to approve, approve this.
Bruce wanted to make a motion.
But thank you very much.
You did so well with your report.
One last thing, under new business that we added to the agenda tonight, we have a new grant contract for violent crime intervention for 210,000. It's a 15-month and 15-day contract that we're trying to get presented by March 1st for, that's why we added it to the agenda tonight.
You need a motion for that, correct?
Yes, I do need that, please. And it has been approved by Jay also.
I make the motion. Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And last thing in purchasing, Commissioner Foster, the pre-bid for the senior center kitchen is March 1st, and March 29th will be the bid opening. Okay. The budget agenda. Cash and fund balance, and we're really quick about this. Unassigned fund balance, 9.4 million. Total fund balance for the general fund, 15.9 million. Cash, 17 million, 197,688, which is up from last year at the end of January. Any questions on the fund balance report? Okay. Sales tax for December, we were up 7% as the county as a whole, and the Anderson County portion up 10%. That's the sales tax report?
What are your comments on that page?
What did I say?
The left side says plus 10%, then it says 254,000.
Well, for the year, we, this graph is a calendar year, which we're on a fiscal year, but the calendar year for the county as a whole, we finished 254,000 less than last year, and Anderson County's total, 46,533, was 1.5 million less, which is a 3% drop.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. Sorry, I get what you're asking. I think of possible questions, Commissioner Jaeger, and I write myself notes that could be asked. ARP projects, only difference from last month is the $7,136.84 on 3.1 that we spent on the property for the Highland. We had a survey done, is that correct Mayor, survey?
Yes, sir.
Yes, survey. And that was the only addition from last month.
Robbie, is that the, are we done with spending on the Highland, or is that kind of the starting point of?
We had to pay the Clark and Master for the back taxes owed, and then we had to distribute to the city of Rocky Top their portion when we made, when you all authorized a resolution to retain the property. There is that expense, and then we will have to clean it up, and so we're still trying to get the final quotes in on that.
Gotcha.
Danny Phillips is working on that, but the taxes didn't come out of the ARP, or they won't come out of there.
Okay.
I don't think they did.
You, I did one out, I did the survey out of, I think.
The survey did, yes.
Okay, yes. We paid both, though, all we have left is clearing of the land.
Cool, thank you.
So, on to the, yes.
Will the cleanup income out of the ARP funds, or will it come?
How much it costs, sometimes if it's not a whole lot, I can find a code possibly to pay it out of. All right, any other questions?
Commissioner Jaeger.
I'm sorry. The ARP funds that are available, what are the stipulations for that section of the?
For the revenue, you lost 3.5 million, not, not a lot.
That's okay.
But for the 2.1 million, it has a lot more restrictions and eligibility requirements, which is more like the water and stuff like that, that we can use those for. When we did our ARP retention payment, that came out of the other eligibilities, it's,
We're moving along on it anyway.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Group two appropriations by the school, there are three of them, seeking approval as a group, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And group three transfers by the school, there are three of those also, one from Fund 143 and two from 141, seeking approval as a group.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Group four appropriations non-school, there are nine of them, 16 through 22, 25, and 28.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Mine's not working now. Thirteen yes, one no? Yes, yes.
No!
No, no, no.
No, no!
No, no, okay.
Very difficult.
Fourteen yes. That's, that's what you want, okay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Group five appropriations.
It's like having Denver back.
Group five appropriations for unassigned fund balance, there are two of those, seeking approval as a group individually, or I can answer any questions?
Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and group six transfers non-school, there are two of those also, seeking approval as a group.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the election commission payroll.
Yes, sir.
We talked once about.
Yes.
Get, getting them raises for the ones that work for, you know, less minimum wage. Where are we at on that, do you know?
For the election commissioners?
No, for the people that worked at the elections.
The poll workers?
The poll workers.
I would have to ask Mr. Stevens about that, I'm not sure, I didn't know that, that was.
Yeah, we, we actually took it up in operations a while back, and he said he would take it to his board, but I've never heard anything about it.
I haven't either, so I'll make a note and ask him.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
My recollection, he was going to take it to his board, and I, I think, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, and in group seven, which is written in visible ink on your agenda, we only had one EMS revenue, which was information only, and then your new business, the budget amendment number 28, which we've already passed earlier, and there was no old business, so that's all I have tonight, unless you all have any questions for me? Good deal, thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have the operations committee report, Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get started, I've got a question to the parliamentarian. What's the score?
Anderson County lost by three.
Laws lost.
Okay, we'll move on. Multi-factor authentication policy. Commissioner Mays made a motion to approve the multi-factor authentication policy, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger, motion passed forward to full commission for approval. And I so moved.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Jaeger made a motion to allow funds to be put in an assigned code for, in an assigned code for future use for vehicle purchases, seconded by Commissioner Mays, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Mays made a motion to authorize Judge Spitzer and Ms. Gad to apply for both grants that they are seeking, motion amended, commit up to a match of 25% of the smaller grant, seconded by Commissioner Anderson, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Jaeger made a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the annual payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the U.S. Department of Energy, seconded by Commissioner Anderson, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Under new business, Commissioner Isbell made a motion to approve resolution number 23-2-1-076, seconded by Commissioner Aaron, motion passed forward to full commission with the recommendation for approval pending the mayor and the law director working out the last paragraph, and that was for the, any new tourism that wants to come into Anderson County.
That language has been worked out. Both got a motion, and seconded by Commissioner Allen, and the mayor, and everybody was good with that, okay. Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes the operations committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell. Number seven, human resources. Kim Whitaker, she, I think she, she was still out there, but I think she, I didn't know if she had, she was going to move part of her. Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm still here. If you would like, I would prefer to come back next month and present the tenure awards as a group, because we had some of the SO that wasn't included, so I'd like to, if that's okay, come back next month and do them all together. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Number eight, Director of Schools. Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. I hope you got a chance to read our report for this month, there's a lot of great stuff in there, and the Anderson County boys won the district tonight, they beat Clinton, and the girls lost, the Clint girls lost two halves, so I missed both of those games, but that's okay, and then UT lost too, so I don't know. But anyway, I'll take any questions.
You did say Anderson County won.
Yeah, Anderson County beat Clinton, and then, so that's one and two in the, in the district, they were three and four.
So Anderson County won.
Yeah, Anderson County won, Clinton lost. Is that not what I said?
Yeah, that's what you said.
That's what you said.
Yeah, but.
We got a dragon over here that was trying to fool us.
Oh.
Last I heard, Clinton won by three. I don't know.
I like Dr. Perry's report.
I feel much better.
You want to make that a motion?
I thought we accepted that report.
Who, who knows anymore? Anyway, hey, this month was UTRUST month, we, we celebrated our principals, our principals do a great job at our schools, they worked tirelessly on that, so if you see one of them, thank them for the hard work they do. I thank you for the hard work you do.
I know in the budget you talked about y'all were close Thursday, or Friday, Sat, Friday, Monday for sickness. How's your guys' numbers?
It, it actually, we were less last week than we are this week, so it really helped. The subs, our board voted to increase subpay by $15 a day because everybody else around did that, and we couldn't get subs anymore, so I think that's going to help, we're working on with ESG on our, ESS on getting that contract redone, so I think that will help.
I always appreciate this report, it's, it's very detailed, and it does highlight some very interesting things happening all through our county. Over, over on one of your pages, you have who is dissecting owl pellets.
Yes.
I thought that was very, very, very interesting, where they're dissecting these owl pellets, so.
You can find a lot of interesting things in an owl pellet.
I bet you can, yeah. So, but thank you for this report, excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Except County Mayor, Mayor Frank.
I do want to clarify something, I said, I want to make sure to clarify when I said I contribute on the child trafficking issue, that I'm contributing to fighting against it, so.
The mailer's already gone out.
Well, you know, I mean, I was just kind of talking fast, and, and it was running together, but I just want to clarify that, so there's lots of good organizations that do do that, and actually, a lot of folks that fly into other countries and do special operations, Operation Underground, and they rescue children from a very horrible situation, so, thank you. Thank you for letting me clarify, but now it's forever recorded.
Right, right, yeah.
The first is, on November 21st, 2022, you authorized me to submit a grant application to Energy Communities Alliance for the benefit of education and outreach. We received notice of a grant award for the full amount of 50,000, it does have no match, and so I'm just requesting a motion to authorize the mayor to accept the grant award, execute the contract, and establish the budget with the dedicated ECA Grant Cost Center according to those grant terms.
And a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Allen, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, I'm requesting a motion to supplant two prior authorizations, one was a motion, and one was a resolution to apply for a USDA grant and loan through the USDA's facility program. I'm requesting a motion to approve resolution 2302-1078 to apply for federal assistance for the USDA for the purpose of building a new animal shelter. As part of this, I'm required to include closing costs, contingencies, interest, soft costs, all in the application, and the resolution is attached.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge, any discussion? Commissioner Jaeger.
I, I'm going to be saying, I'm going to come clean, and I'm a little lost, can someone give me a page number for that one?
I'm old Tyler. Ninety-three?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. Thank you. I just want to stay up, that's fine.
That was it? Commissioner Foster.
So, once we have the final numbers of the grant part, that will still come back to Commissioner for final approval? This is just to go through the process?
This is for me to apply for that amount, yes, yes.
Because I know, we had some emails, and I don't know if anybody else did, about just some other needs, I guess, that the committee has seen, or besides a new building, so I just didn't know if that is being addressed also, I know this is for the, a new building, but I know there's a committee for that, so there was just concerns, and I don't know if anybody else got any emails about moving forward with this, so that was just a couple of questions.
I think Commissioner McCamey, since Commissioner Wondell could not be here, is going to address the animal issues, or the minutes from the Animal Advisory Committee tonight.
Mr. Foster, we do have a lease on ground also.
Any other, Commissioner Mays?
Yeah, I just, would the animal shelter minutes, would there be any action items? Is that, in reference to what Commissioner Foster said?
I think everybody got the same emails about some of the needs, I just want to make sure if there's any pressing needs out there for the shelter that we, you know, can address those tonight, but I don't know that, I don't want to steal your thunder or do anything.
I'll give a report, but we are an advisory committee, and there's nothing that, you know, no motions for county commission to act, we are advising, and advising only.
And Mayor, I don't, if there's needs, I don't pretend to know, or, you know, those emails indicated that there might be some needs for the current.
Those, those are all brought up here, we, there we go. We had motion inside the advisory committee, no motion for county commission.
Thank you. No other discussion, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And then the last item on the agenda was the second wave opioid settlements, and also some amendments to prior agreements, or settlement agreements, so you did in October of 2021 authorize the county mayor to execute administrative documents related to global opioid litigation, but as these requests from the state involve amendments to the past settlements, and also new global settlements, I would like to ensure authorization, so I'm requesting a motion to authorize the county mayor's execution and submission of the Anderson County participation package to include the necessary administrative documents for the following settlements, TIVA, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, and the three proposed amendments to the state subdivision agreement extending the agreement to these new settlements, deleting a sentence regarding redirecting funds, and extending the agreement to the Indo bankruptcy forms. And I emailed you some summary documents, basically why the, the state asks for these subdivision sign-offs or agreements, when they're, they package, for lack of better words, Jay can do a better job on this, for a lack of better words, they package all of these individual suits together, and they become a national, national suits, where they have administrators that are working on this. They reach an agreement, and there is an incentive in there for the more participation they get from the states and their subdivisions, the more money you get. So, if you recall, the last time we signed off on this, the state of Tennessee had pretty much every county in the state and the city signed off, we were eligible to receive more litigation funding to fight opiate addiction, and so that's the same for this, they want as many subdivisions in the state of Tennessee to sign on, and so that's what this is. And it just, I just basically have to fill out the forms and click submit, so.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Mayor, do we, do you have any idea when we'll find out what kind of funding we'll get from this?
You know, I did not get a chance to break it down and compare it to those last, you know, Indo and Purdue, Johnson &amp; Johnson, McKesson, Cardinal, I could probably get a decent idea if I do that. Allergan, so the Tennessee maximum payment is looking at 57 million over seven years, TIVA, 96 million over 13 years, CVS, 127 million over 10 years, Walgreens, 138 over 15 years, and Walmart, 72 million likely in one payment, and I don't know what that looks like compared to what we have done before, and so I just ran out of time today, but we did talk at Budget Committee about bringing you all, Robbie and I are going to work on, what have we received so far, giving you a breakdown on what those are, what they represent, and how many years we will receive them. One of those bankruptcies, or the, I'm sorry, the Johnson &amp; Johnson case was packaged, we got one big lump sum for nine years of payments, bundled as one, so we're going to have a big payment there, but we won't have that big payment every year because it was all bundled. We also are getting money from the state, and, so local governments are receiving our money, and then the state has money in their own fund, and they have reserved some for the counties as well, and in that, that one isn't anything, that's just an allocation, and I just had to, to. And I just had to, to basically tell them where to send the check. That one, if you've got one second, I think it's $425,000 we're going to receive in that payment.
That's what I remember too. You're right.
Do it.
That's what I remember.
Okay, okay. So, we're going to receive that payment. And the thing that's going to be difficult, and this is why Robbie and I need to put it in a spreadsheet for you all for expenditure purposes, some of it can really be used for anything. It's considered damages for past, how the county has addressed opioid issues or at the jail or EMS and Narcan. But then some of the funds must be spent for projects going forward. And there is an 11, can't remember if it's 11, 12, 13-page document of all the things we can do with it, from prevention to programming. There are a lot of things that we can do, but it still has to be a report where we send back to Nashville and say, here's what we're, here's what we're doing with it. So...
Sounds like a little ARP.
Yes, yes, yes.
We have to use it for certain things, but we do have some flexibility.
Yes, and it's going to make a great difference in the community. I mean, even tonight, you heard, you all voted on Judge Spitzer's plan. That is something where, you know, if you're looking for a source of funding for any match, you know, that is a direct outreach to recovery and dealing with opiate abuse. There are other programs I know the county has. This is a great way to match them or further their programs. So...
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner, his.
Hey, Mayor, I had a question asked me this week, and I should have already asked you about it. Do you know anything about the New River Waterline Extension? Is there any movement on that or?
I do not. I can get with the water authority and ask.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I already have a couple of other issues that I need to meet with them on. So...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, by the way, we had, we had a wildcat clarify. Fifty forty-three was the score.
Thank you for the opportunity to be with you again tonight. Does anybody have any questions on our contract approvals? Okay, Anderson County zoning violations. We've currently got 58 open cases. That's a lot. I don't think we've had that many in several years. But thanks to the planning and zoning codes enforcement staff, they're out here looking for these places and they're referring to our office quite frequently. We've closed out two. Both of these are down in Ben's Mobile Home Park, and I was going to share that with Tracy. I promise I will though. But you see those two, the bankruptcies, delinquent taxes. The big thing that there is, we had a delinquent tax sale today. The county netted over $400,000, another online auction. Lawsuit update, the malpractice cases that we've got going on, there's two of those. We've got an opportunity to mediate those. I think that's a great opportunity right there. I need approval from this body on three issues there. The authority to mediate, the authority for the chairman to sign the mediation form, and also the chairman is willing to be our representative there. And the fourth thing, you don't have to vote on this, is we'll bring back any settlement to you to vote on as a whole. So, whatever we decide there, it's just subject to your approval. But I do need these three motions made. They can be combined in one. Authority to mediate, that the chairman can sign the mediation order, and the chairman will be our representative for Anderson County.
Is that a motion for all three, and seconded by Commissioner Varen? Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Am I allowed to vote on this, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'm sure Commissioner Val would like to hear this next one. Miss Nancy Talent sued us a few years ago. We felt like it was frivolous from the very beginning. The sheriff's office did absolutely nothing wrong in this case. She lost at the Court of Appeals. This is the U.S. Court of Appeals. This is not the State Court of Appeals. But today, we got word where the U.S. Supreme Court denied her permission to appeal. So, this case is over. Hopefully, she's a pro se defendant or plaintiff here. But anyway, we think it's over. She's exhausted all her recourse here through the court system, all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court. So, that's a case we can knock off.
Hey, Jay, how many years did that take?
Right at four.
Yeah, something like that.
Right, about four, I think. And let's see. Okay, you got the Clinton Public Library opinion. Just a draft there to let you know what we're working on for the Conservation Board. If anybody's got any recommendations on their event policy in the application, please let us know. We took those, what you see in your, that draft package, we took those from Oak Ridge, University of Tennessee, City of Knoxville, Knox County, and Atlanta. So, it's a combination of all those, and but Conservation Board is willing to allow anybody to give us input. So, please do. If you have any thoughts regarding that, let me know. Let's see. Poor Farm Historic Marker, I don't, I think everybody got the email from Leo. We've been successful in getting that awarded to us. Robbie's cut the check. We did that several months ago. And now, I think Leo is organized. Anybody wants to come down and visit, he'll show you around. Leo is an incredible human being. He has gone out there and cleaned up that Poor Farms Cemetery by himself. Now, we're going to have a historic marker there to talk about the people that live there, the people that perished there, what they were doing during that time. And it's a real piece of Anderson County history that I've really caught on to. If you want to read the book Leo put together, you will love it. But anyway, we thought, the marker is in. We thought we're going to have to put it up, but the state DOT has now said they're going to come in and put it up. And we're just looking for the good place to put it. I think somewhere out there, Blockhouse Valley and Old Emery, right there around the intersection would be great to memorialize that historic location. But anyway, if you get a chance to go down to the Poor Farm, please do. You'll enjoy Leo a lot. Yes, ma'am?
So, I think he's doing something tomorrow at 10:00 p.m. Where are they meeting?
I guess right there at the firing range, you know, Nature Way. Go down Blockhouse Valley, all the way to the end where it dead ends into Old Emery. You'll see a little road there. It's called Nature Way, and it's gravelled. And you'll see them right down there. If you can't find them, text me, call me. I'll get you in touch. Yes, sir. It's a history, a regular state historic site, big plaque.
It's one of those gray ones, isn't it, with the three, tri-star thing on top or something like that?
I don't, I thought it was brass for some reason. I will find out. I'll get that answer for you. But one thing I need here is I need the authority for the mayor to sign the placement on that. And it says the county executive, so that's county mayor here. I think that's old terminology. But if you had to make a motion to allow the mayor to sign that placement for him, I'd appreciate it.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the Anderson County historian, I don't know if that's his accurate title or not, but he spoke to a group in Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge Heritage Preservation Association, and he really did a great job. The whole thing was about the poor.
Zach or Matthew?
Zach, yeah.
Yes, Zach's really got a passion. We've been blessed. Past three people, of course, Mary Harris served in that role for forty-some years, but we got Matthew right after that. He was wonderful. And now, we got Zach, and Zach's got a real passion for that, the history of Anderson County.
His whole talk was on the poor farm, and I think people really enjoyed it, you know?
It is, it's a crazy concept now, looking back, but it's got some merit. It really does. Anyway, that's all I've got for you. Other than that, did you make any vote on that authority for the mayor?
Yeah, the vote on the, the sign of the mayor, yeah. Let's go to the board and vote on the mayor choosing the location. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, just a couple of things here. I don't know if you realize this, but Johnny Alley was selected Assessor of the Year. So, please, when you see Johnny, give him a big hug. He's doing a great job. Other thing is Lucas Pruitt. You may know Lucas. He's an Anderson County High School senior. His dad interned with me. He was a deputy sheriff for years here. Brilliant guy, super smart. He's now with the DA's office. Lucas won his 100th match in wrestling in one of the lightweight divisions. He's also a graduate of our Cadet Academy. Lucas is a fine young man, but thanks to his parents. But also, keep Dr. Joe Rainey in your prayers. Thank y'all so much. Any questions?
Lucas also works for Emotik, I believe.
Does he? He's, he's really tech guy. Every time we, he'd come over there, he says, "Do you need that computer?" And I said, "Look, there's a process, son. You're not just going to lift my computers out of here." No, he's a brilliant kid. He really is, and fine athlete. Any questions? Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Number 11 Committee and Board reports. If you've already done operations, let's go to the Animal Care Advisory Report. Commissioner McCamey.
Okay, you've all heard me mention two or three times tonight that I don't like the idea of county commission trying to micromanage. So, these recommendations are from the advisory committee to the mayor. And if county commission wants to take any action on it, then you have at it. But the first item was a recommendation for 16 additional kennels for dogs with a space for cats be built on the property where the 12-run kennel is now. And hopefully that it could be built like the other one was by the prisoners. And the committee also recommended that the $4,000 that we have left in donations be used for the 16 runs. And that is a recommendation to the mayor. I spoke with the mayor about the building 16 more runs there, and she had informed me that the, there's no sewer out there. The septic system would not allow that, although we could build another septic system to handle that. If that's something the county commission would, would want to go along with, I would, I would hope we get a motion here tonight to ask the mayor to get bids for that.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah. Mayor, could you comment on that?
Well, I've not really had time to fully investigate that, but, you know, building 16 more runs is something I'm willing to look at. But I don't understand why we would build on already a substandard site that has numerous deficiencies, not enough room or space for the very employees themselves, is not ADA compliant, doesn't have paving, and we're going to continue to expand. I would just encourage anyone to go down and kind of look at, yes, we have made do, but it's always intended to be a temporary facility. But I'm willing to look at it. But I do know that we have had, over the years, the sewer, the septic backup. We have to get it pumped regularly, and you're adding another 16 runs. I don't know, I don't know about the wisdom of it, but I'm willing to take a look at it.
Commissioner Bochamp.
Mayor, didn't we just approve for you to get a grant for a new animal shelter?
Yes.
So, we are wanting to build a new one, but we're going to put more money into this one, and then we're going to have an empty building once we get to the new one.
Yes.
Makes absolutely no sense to me. I think we move forward with, with the bigger, what we want in the future, where we're going to house our animals in the future. I don't want to spend any more money on a building that's probably going to sit empty because I don't see, I don't foresee anybody buying this unless they have animals and they're, they love animals, and they just want to have them out there. I don't see what you can use this for in the future, so I think we're going to be stuck with this. We add 16 more to it. I'd rather think about the future, building a newer facility, what we need, what Anderson County needs, and not put any more money into what we currently have and house the animals that we have, that we bring in, and not spend any more money until we move forward with the new one.
Also, and, you know, getting into, and I can get some, you know, quick back-of-the-napkin estimates. But the 12 run was right at $25,000, which kept us from having an architect and having to go through that entire process that is required. That's how we, still, it was $25,000 even with the assistance of the inmates. So, if we're looking at another facility, then that's a whole nother process. Again, I don't like the location of the facility where it is. It's in with where we take our unused or, you know, used-up refrigerators and metal and all of those things. It's a bad public message if we're concerned about the welfare of animals. But I'm, I'm willing to bring something back to, I can take that to Budget or Operations if you would like me to take a look at, what would that cost?
Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah, I would just, I would like to have the mayor take a look at that and come back.
Absolutely. I'm happy to do that, Commissioner. I will try my best for this next budget meeting, and if not, the following one at the drop-dead. Just depends, it's just been so, it's been so busy lately. But I think I can get something done pretty quickly by the next budget meeting.
Okay, and just to answer one, one question about the, the new animal shelter. Should we get the grant and the loan? We're talking two to three years. And in the meantime, we're, we're overrun. You know, it's, it's sad. It really is. The next item was a recommendation that the shelter use the Shelter Buddy software for tracking, and that was another recommendation to be made to the mayor. Do you want to speak about that, Mayor?
I can, or do you want to finish and then I can speak to all?
Okay, let me. The next motion was to use the donations for $4,000 that's, that's left in the donation fund to be used toward the new temporary shelter, I guess you'd call it, should that happen. Another recommendation was that to ask the mayor to move the open position from part-time to full-time. And that's, that's another recommendation, and I would, I'm pretty much for that. I think we ought to do that, but that's something that we've asked the mayor to do. And then there was a motion to fill a position to have a full-time shelter coordinator and coordinate with rescue shelters, and that motion carried by the committee also. The next item was to have the mayor and/or director present a copy of the 2324 proposed budget to the committee so that we can make recommendations to the budget committee, and I would so move that.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey.
Is this for all, like four, four things? You can make the motion for like four things that you just wrote?
No, just that one. Yeah, the others are recommendations, you know, that, I mean, if commission wants to make a motion with any of the other, that's fine. But like I said, we're an advisory committee to the mayor who is over the animal shelter. And our, our recommendations are just advisory only.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, second by Commissioner Varen. Commissioner Palmer, did you have a question?
What is the motion then?
To ask the mayor and/or director to present the proposed 2324 budget to the Animal Welfare Advisory Committee so that we can make recommendations on the budget to the budget committee. Which they'll, that'll go to the budget committee. They'll turn it into the budget committee, but we would like to have a copy of it also.
Yes, I'll ask you about this motion. Is this the motion to have additional runs?
No, no, no.
Okay.
That, the mayor's going to go ahead and do that.
Okay.
This is just to have the mayor and/or the director to- This is just to have the mayor and/or the director to present us with a copy of their proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Okay. My system just came back up.
Any other discussion? We can probably, we're not asking for money on this. We can probably just do a voice vote since we, I don't think everybody's.
Just, just, here's wanting a copy of the budget.
Yeah, just the proposed budget so that we can look at it and make recommendations.
That's a public call.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, Mayor. That concludes our report.
Okay, that's all from animals.
Tell us about this, what we're using, the software we're using and what, what the Shelter Buddy would do.
We have talked about getting some software, but we've also talked about our, we have a software program that we already pay for that is ComKate, and we use that for all the animal control calls. We have discussed getting with them, they work. This company is, their whole business model is designed to help small to mid-size municipal or county governments. And so, we were gonna talk to them about if they could add a node or something to our existing program because we're already tracking the animals that we pick up on a call, or if there's a bite scenario or quarantine. And so, really, the only gap that's left for an animal is if it is, you know, either a citizen surrender or an owner surrender or someone, you know, puts it outside the fence or inside the fence. And so, we think we can take what we have and actually use that for a management system. But I will talk to Damon about it and see what his thoughts are. I mean, we've just kind of tossed that around in conversation and have it really made an effort to go the distance, but I will, I will talk to him.
Okay, is there any update on cameras?
So, we have the technology there. I know I have a draft policy through the IT committee. I'm kind of waiting. I think Jay was gonna get us an opinion on, is it a public record? Is it not a public record? If we do a policy, I just want clarity before we stick a, a camera up. What is, I, I don't want it to be something where it's used to harass employees or question. I mean, if it's used for management or it's used for security. But I also don't want it to be used to harass shelter staff, so. Funding is approved. But that's where my, that's where we're waiting on right now.
You're waiting on the funding?
No, on a, a policy clarification. Yep.
Yeah, I've talked to Rob, is that one Rob for?
Yes, yep, yep. Okay.
Anything else? I know several months ago, I made a, a motion to hire a medical director for the ambulance service, a veterinarian director. Can you update us on that?
Dr. Garrett is really doing a great job. He is also on the Tennessee, Tennessee Board of Veterinary Health. So, he has been just a real asset to the organization. And in fact, has helped us with different programs. There's one, I think it's called Shelter United. It's like a purchasing organization that helps us get medical supplies and different shelter needs for discounted costs. He has helped get us up to standard on a lot of the medical protocols. You've probably seen, if you watch The Animal Shelter on Facebook as an example. One of the main things that I talked to Damon about when he came in was because our facility is so small, for instance, respiratory infections on the cats was a real problem. And so, Dr. Garrett has helped with some advice in that regard, how to minimize the spread of disease, how to assess the animals. He helps us get meds for them, and he does this all for free for Anderson County for the love of animals and trying to get us in a better place as, as an organization. But one of the very first things I talked to him about when he came in and Damon, when he came in is some of the stuff I saw when I was working down there were people who were well-intentioned, but were going from cage to cage, touching the animals, not washing, going to the next one, getting them out. And, you know, those are things that if we want to control the spread of disease and, and protect the animals and keep them healthy, and obviously, to get adopted, you know, we had to start addressing some of that. And so, you'll see, for instance, with the puppies, you'll see the volunteers or the, the part-time and the, or the bark students, you know, wearing blue gowns or something that they can take off. So, he's, he's doing a great job. He's getting us plugged in to places where we haven't been able to go before with those relationships.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Jerry. Dr. Garrett is fantastic. If any of y'all know him, he's a wonderful man. But he sits on the state board for veterinary and sciences, and it looks like we're gonna get another one of our residents on the state board. That's extremely rare for a county our size to have two members on the state veterinarian board. But he's pushing hard for that, and he's been on there long enough to where he's got the power, the leverage to get this done. So, I'm excited about that, means two Anderson County residents on the state board of veterinary and sciences. Thank you, Dr. Garrett, if you're watching.
He also, at his own cost, got us, like, there's a couple of huge documents that are every law related to animal welfare, animal control. And he got us a copy of that. It's huge. But he is also helping us get into compliance, like, are there, there issues? And there are a lot of differences between animal control and what we're dealing with out there. There are, it's a whole set of laws there, then there's shelter law. And so, a lot of it will get, Damon and I will get, you know, these emails from Dr. Garrett that are very long where he's going through a particular issue and he's saying, "Well, here's what the law says here, here's what it says here." And he's just very thorough. And some of it, he's even recommending that maybe Anderson County address this. And, you know, there's some gray area in the law that maybe needs some clarification to where, and, you know, we know that we're clearly authorized to do X, Y, Z. And some of that even regards adoption. You know, making sure that it's clear that we have the authority to do that. Right now, it's actually kind of ambiguous in the law, but we do it, so.
Okay, the software that we have in, in place now, does it, does it track? Like, how many animals come in on a daily basis? How many are adopted? How many are, have to be euthanized? How many go to rescue? Does it track that, those numbers?
If we create a way to, so right now, when you, it has dropdown menus. If we create a way to do either a found or owner surrender, then yes, it will do that. Otherwise, it's done all through paperwork. So, every animal does have an intake number and has to be hand-tabulated, so.
Okay, one of the recommendations was that we create a position for shelter coordinator? Do you think that's something that would be beneficial? I know, I mean, they're, they're short-staffed.
Yes.
Big time. And that would, that would be a new position, but do you think that's something that's doable?
I don't know that, I mean, if we have a full-size shelter, but I don't know where, I mean, part of the issue with the shelter is where are you gonna put people? And if you look at our animal control officers, one of their desks is in a room with the county's cleaning supplies. And, you know, I, I don't know where we put all, it, it's really substandard for what, at the end of the day, they are people and they have, you know, certain standards for, yeah, we can, we can do something. It might be something that's a part-time, but if we're gonna have somebody working in a full-time position, where are they gonna go? And I, I think, if anything, I agree with making a part-time, an open part-time position full-time. But if anything, the real need is animal control is the, is, I don't think folks understand. This is not just standing around petting cats and cleaning their litter box and feeding them. The number one issue out there is the animal control issues. And if you have an officer who calls in sick and it is a round-the-clock, you know, the sheriff's department does a fantastic job of trying to triage that for us. Until we get a, a little bit further along on creating a system with the sheriff's department who's willing to work with us on some after-hours, but there are some after-hours they just simply can't do. That's where the demands are, and when the public is saying, "We need you out here, we want you out here, we need you out here," that's where the majority of the work is, so.
Okay. Looks like Ms. Beloski, she's a board member and she wanted to stick her comment.
Thank you, Commissioners. Hopefully, we will not be long tonight. I appreciate you taking a minute to listen to these concerns. You know, we have had six meetings. They started in August. We missed a December meeting because of the holidays. And the mayor has attended one of those meetings. We have been asking and making recommendations to her since then, and we haven't really gotten much feedback except for that one meeting in October. You know, we are begging and we really want, you know, help, and we want her partnership, and we want to help make things better at this shelter. You know, I understand Commissioner Bochamp's concern about, why are we putting more runs in and why are we expanding? Because we're still euthanizing animals, because there's a waiting list for owner surrender animals. And people are calling and saying, "I can't take care of this animal." And they're being told, "Well, if you bring it down, it's gonna be euthanized." We saw what happened in December in Morgan County where puppies were thrown off of a bridge. Thank God Sarge stepped up to save the one remaining animal. But things are not going well at the shelter, and their hands are tied. And without partnership with the mayor and to take into consideration what we're making recommendations for, then we're still at a standstill and we're back in the same exact position that we were in when a few brave employees stepped up to say what was happening down there and shed some light on what was going on. You know, we are here tonight on behalf of the committee, former Commissioner Robin Beloski, the Animal Rescue Foundation of Anderson County, I think, is that right, or?
Anderson County Animal Rescue.
Sorry. And we are prepared to make an eight-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation to the shelter tonight to help cover medical care and vaccines because none of that is included in the animal shelter budget when we were looking at that. So, we wanted to give this to the mayor to help with those costs. Furthermore, you know, in order for this committee to be successful and to assist the mayor and to work with rescue groups and to help make the shelter a better place, we need to have those open lines of communication. We're excited because I believe the mayor is gonna be attending our March meeting. We did have a pretty extensive agenda that was sent to her shortly before the February meeting and didn't get, that wasn't enough time to respond. So, we're looking forward to meeting with her at that meeting, getting some answers to these questions that we've had since August. Furthermore, there's been a few other people, Mr. Gray, that has been hired to assist with the shelter. We have never had the opportunity to meet him. He's, I don't believe he's ever graced us at any of our meetings that are, you know, necessary to tackle some of these questions that were brought up today. The overcrowding, the euthanasia that is still occurring. Director McKenna has done a fantastic job. He is working with the resources that he has, has been working wonderfully with rescue groups, but there's just not enough there until changes are being made. Right now, I know that Sarge has been sponsoring animals at several local boarding facilities this month because I think they had an intake of twenty-six animals in one day. And that's why it is essential to build some more space. Otherwise, you're gonna be hearing from the public again because those numbers are gonna be getting out. And speaking of numbers, we have been requesting since, oh, sorry, since the meeting, can I just go on just a little bit more, please?
Real quick.
Okay. Since the first meeting in August, numbers to look at what the euthanasia rates are, what the intake rates are, what the adoption rates are. We have yet to receive any of those. So, we would just, you know, ask that you approve these, and we look forward to meeting with the mayor come March.
Thank you.
We do have funds for vaccines and I appreciate the donation, so we do purchase that. I have talked to Robbie about actually doing maybe a medical line on them so there would be more transparency where there's a division. So, if things comes, for instance, how it's in the budget, it may be coming out of other supplies and, and service or other supplies. I don't know what the code is, but we do purchase that, so. And, and I do appreciate, I think, I do enjoy collaboration, but also, I enjoy being treated as a human and a person with rights and dignity. And I respond well to emails or phone calls or walking into my office or requests to have a conversation. I don't respond well when I walk into a meeting and a member hisses at me or when I come around a corner and I'm growled at and eyes are rolled. So, again, this is an advisory committee. I welcome collaboration. I've been in this business a very long time. My mom and aunt donated countless dollars. My brothers and I currently are managing a lease for facility right now that helps provide animal welfare services. So, I'm open to all of these things, but I'm also, we started off the meeting tonight with a presentation about game changers. And I also refuse to be a victim, as was put on that slide. And while Ms. Beloski mentioned the brave citizens stepping forward, I was not brave enough in defending the absolute outrageous threats and behavior against county employees, the majority of which were unfounded. I will not be bullied anymore. I am an advocate for animals, and I will not be bullied. This commission can take it over if you want, but I believe I know what I'm doing. I have proven that I know what I'm doing. My family has proven that we know what we're doing, and I challenge each and every commissioner and every individual who is watching at home to Google animal welfare all across the United States of America. Google various counties, Google the multimillion-dollar Young Williams Animal Shelter and see if you don't see the very same issues taking place there that you heard tonight from Ms. Beloski. The issue is overpopulation. Now, I would love to step out in front of everything instead of just continuing to bail water out of a boat that's constantly filling in with more water. The issue is, if we have extra funds, we need to get into the spay-neuter business. Maybe we get a vehicle, maybe there are other ideas where we go out into the communities where we know there are issues, where we know people have trouble housing their animals. Why aren't we hearing that? Instead, we're asking impossible things for, how, how do we, with sixteen more runs, if you have twenty-six animals come in a day, how is that a solution? How many homes out there are there? How many? So, again, happy to collaborate. I'm unaware that those, that data has been asked for since August, anytime it's come in. I know Ms. Hall has done public records request. We have complied with those public requests. Damon called me. He did tell me that VADA. Damon called me, he did tell me that Veda showed up down at the shelter, asked to get that. He called me to tell me, "Mayor, I just haven't had the time to sit down. I'm going to get to it, I will get you that." If it's been since August, I haven't been made aware of that. We will get it for you, I'm happy to do that.
Commissioner Van.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was thinking about saying this before the mayor spoke that last time. It just reaffirmed I needed to. I want to thank the Animal Advisory Committee for being willing to serve. I do. I don't think there's enough people in our county who are willing to step forward and sacrifice their time for no pay to be able to provide a service. In the kindest terms that I can muster and the Lord knows my heart, please understand when I say that you all are an advisory committee. You're not regulatory. Regulatory has teeth, pardon the pun. Advisory asks. When you ask, there will be times when the answer will be no. I had a hard time learning that as a kid. I'd go to Mama, "I want something", and sometimes she'd say, "No". I appreciate the efforts y'all do. I'm sure every commissioner up here appreciates the efforts that you all put forward, but please, please don't think that when you are told no, it's just because we don't support you or we don't like you and we're going to say no sometimes, we're going to make decisions sometimes you all ain't going to like and y'all ain't going to agree with. Going out and criticizing and ridiculing, you got a right to criticize your government. Our government was set up that way. What you don't have a right to do is threatening. And when it crosses the line to do that, you might not get as much support as you originally intended. Please understand, we appreciate the efforts that you all are putting forward. This commission allowed this committee to be formed. We could have said, "No, we're not going to have an animal advisory committee". We're not trying to hold you back, but understand we're limiting what we can do. And I think Commissioner McCamey reaffirmed that two or three times during his report, that you all are an advisory committee. When y'all are in your meetings and you're mentioning something to Commissioner McCamey or Commissioner Wondell and they look at you and go, "Guys, I don't know if that's going to fly or not", they've got experience. They're trying to guide you in the right direction. They're not trying to hold you back, all right? Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, how many volunteers do you have there at the animal shelter?
We just have the Bark students, to my knowledge, and I think Damon had started branching out. But the HR director and the law director's office put together some recommendations and they recommended that we do an official form, an application, so that we are sure to train. One of the things we discovered during the last series of events was that volunteers were just talking to each other or going to commission or not going through a chain where there's a reporting process. So that would be HR or the law director or the mayor, if there are issues that you're seeing at the shelter, good or bad. And so we're in the process of getting that in order because Damon wants to get some folks on board pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mace.
Yeah, stepping back into what Commissioner McCamey had said, what the advisory committee had suggested, do we have a cost on the software?
I just Googled it today, it says it starts at $25 a month. But I'm sure the more you.
Yeah, I would just ask that, you know, if there is a need or desire for it, maybe have a financial package put together that the mayor can look at. And then going back to the part-time to full-time position. I mean, is that something, I guess I'm looking for a win tonight. Is that something that we can, is that something that both parties are already in agreement with and that can happen? Or is that something that you all need to collaborate on?
I haven't finished the budget with animal control, so I can definitely put that in there and even do that as an option. And again, I'm happy to look at Shelter Buddy, but I'm going to go back to a conversation we had about the library board. Can I step forward and ask what software the Sheriff's Department uses? Or do we have volunteers that come in and step into the finance office and determine, well, what accounting software is the finance office going to use? I mean, I'm happy to have a conversation, but at what point is it commission's role to say, "I think at that time, it's time for me to make a case to you for why the decisions are being put forward by the staff that's actually working in the business"? If I talk to Damon and Damon's like, "You know what, I love Shelter Buddy", I actually talked to him about software when he very first came on board. He said, "Mayor, he's been with Young Williams for years". He said, "We have been through various software programs. There's just not a lot that's out there, we switch constantly." So I'm happy to look at it. But again, I mean, how deep do we want to get into this with commission? I mean, there are, do we, are we going to ask the trustee? Are we going to, where does this end? And that's what I'm, you know, I'm looking at this taking place at counties across the state of Tennessee and you're seeing some organizations shut down because the volunteer community is stepping over a line in terms of what support and what is just a never-ending, there is nothing to ever be happy about or celebrate. And I've watched this go on in Oak Ridge, I've watched it go on in Sevier County, I've watched it in Campbell County. There are other counties in Fayette County that have shut down, that completely shut down. This issue needs a global address from the state of Tennessee to address how we handle animal, animal welfare in the state of Tennessee. And I think there's been a reluctance at the state level to deal with it and address it. And there is so much emotion and passion there. I'm trying to take care of citizen, there are different values that are out there. For law enforcement, it's pretty clear. You break the law, you break in, it's pretty clear. There are different values and in the state of Tennessee, animals are considered property. And right or wrong, that is, that's how they exist right now under a state statute. And so, you know, we're trying to do a lot with one little substandard facility and the staff we have, and it's a balancing act.
No, I was just curious on software, if that's something that they're interested in, to have something put together if they are the advisory committee to present at a meeting and not necessarily just have the name or nothing with it, but I understand.
You know, in years past, I have, I mean, we were bringing data to commission and I acknowledge the failure on that. We should, basically, once everything kind of went sideways, first with Bron's Health and then with everything that happened, we got out of that. But I have tracked prior years. I actually asked a team member to enter, to take Young Williams. They published theirs and that is our intent, to keep ours published on a website. I asked that we put Young Williams in a spreadsheet and track their success rates, their intakes, their adoptions, their reclaims, their youth rates. And I can tell you that in our short amount of time that we started tracking them in terms of the bar graphs. And I do intend to present that in March. And I also talked to Damon about, you know, bringing some of that here. One of the things they do in Knox County that we don't do here is they have a program where animals that are out there, they spay-neuter and take them, take them back out and just release them. And, you know, it's called a trap neuter and release, but in some of those occasions, those animals are really domesticated animals that don't want to just go back out there. And so I don't know that that's something that I would ever advocate for, but it does help lower your youth rates. But if kitty tries to follow you back to the truck, I mean, is that a win? It's a win if you want to say you're not euthanizing. So, I mean, there are a lot of variables here. I think you can look at some of the stuff that's gone at the Oak Ridge Shelter where, you know, I recorded one of the videos, there's a cat that's been there a year. How does that, are we picking up that slack? I mean, it's like the balloons at the Shriners at the county fair. You shut down one spigot and then where does it go? Where does the public go? Does it go to other counties? And I know when we were shut down for Parvo, I know it went to other counties. I got the phone calls. So this is a much larger issue that it's more than just this magic answer or this magic answer.
Commissioner Fox.
What is the current, I mean, I know a lot of this happened, I'm sorry. I know a lot of this happened with the committee and being put together before this commission came on. How's the staff, and I probably should know, but I try not to micromanage departments and that kind of thing and go, because there's a lot of departments across the county that are falling under you. But what's that staffing look like? And then like the part-time position that they would like to make full-time? I know we've done one of those before, but what's in the budget and that kind of thing? And I know you're going to come back to the budget to ask for full-time money. So I just didn't know what the current staffing was and then costs associated with that.
Well, right now, we have a vacant animal control officer position. And the animal control officers also help at the staff or during transports or, you know, taking to plan pet hood for spay-neuter or LMU if it's one of those occasions where we're participating there. And then we have the other part-time position that's vacant, so. And I can, you know, I can, I didn't realize this was going to be a full debate on the commission floor or I would have come. I've tried to bring everything that I could possibly think that you all will address and if you want, I will bring it to operations or budget or both for next month, if you would like.
Anything else for the Animal Advisory Committee? All right, next we've got Intergovernmental Committee. Oh, I'm sorry.
May I speak just for a second? My name's Veda Oberlin. I represent part of the advisory committee. I also represent the animal shelter community personally and I'm a board member of Sarge. I, over the past six months, have really gotten to know Damon. And I can tell you, I commend Mayor Frank for selecting Damon. He is, he is awesome. For bringing in Dr. Garrett because he, as she mentioned, has brought in a lot of good things for the shelter. We, honestly, we totally support the new shelter. Some of the recommendations were, we're just trying to figure out, you know, a way to Band-Aid, for lack of a better term, until we can get that shelter. You know, she's been very supportive in, you know, trying to find the money for that shelter, for the new shelter. And, and, you know, I know everybody on the advisory board, you know, we don't think that it's entitlement, you know, we honestly don't. That, you know, that may have, I think we're all tired, I'm just going to say that. But she has done a fantastic job on the selections. We do just have some suggestions from what we can see. And she's right, there is a whole big world out there that, that it's not just one fix. It's not just, you know, one little segment. You know, spay-neuter is huge. If we could get that on, I mean, we would be, we would be set. But, you know, again, the advisory committee, we just want to try to, you know, provide suggestions and, you know, hopefully see them to fruition. So, you know, I, like I said, I know everybody is tired and I just wanted to reiterate that, even if it's just from my personal opinion and from my past experience of being with Sarge and my current experience and currently the board chair, but also I have a 25-year human resources background. So I know how hard it is to, to recruit and to, you know, get employees. So I just kind of wanted to, you know, I guess, break that ice there just that, you know, the advisory committee doesn't feel entitled and we don't feel like that we are commanding. So, and again, that may be my personal opinion, but I think that's speaking for all the advisory committee.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Commissioner, Chairman Denenberg.
Chairman Denenberg. Intergovernmental Committee met Friday, excuse me, February 13th, 2023, in room 312. Those present were all of the members. No one was absent. I'm going to make this as quick as I can. Others were Robert Wilkinson, Pat Flood, Mayor Frank, Chairman Anderson and Commissioner Varin. No citizens addressed the committee because it was a a meeting of the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, TVA Bull Run Update Visual Presentation by Robert Wilkinson, CCR Technical Manager for TDEC, Pat Flood, Senior Advisor, TDEC's Bureau of Environment. There was no action taken because it was strictly a report given primarily by Mr. Wilkinson to the committee. There was a motion made by Commissioner Wondell to place American Nuclear Update as the next item to be updated by TDEC, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge, and the motion passed. And do we need to have that voted on? I thought so, so.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Bochamp, to have the, the American Nuclear.
Update on the next meeting, which would be March.
So, can I address that? So I don't know that they could be here for that. I mean, I can provide you where they are and then once, um, so they're working through that quality assurance plan.
They are.
Then when that goes back, when they provide their comments, then EPA will get out and do their testing. It would be appropriate to ask them, you know, I could put as part of your record where they are, when EPA is going to be here. In fact, I have, I reached out to Jay today because I've got two agreements that I have to send to him. One is a request to access that pasture land. They want to get some background samples and so I have to do an access authorization. Once EPA gets the tests back in, the lab results, that would be a perfect time for TDEC to come brief you on everything that's been found.
But they won't even get that next one back in until, I think it's the 20th of next month. It's the early part of the 20th, whatever it was really supposed to be. But you're right, they won't be ready to address us.
Yeah.
Before, good gracious, April, May.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a little bit.
It'll be a while.
But I do know they're willing to do that, but they need to have something to report to you, so.
So I think perhaps we need to revert and to change, well, can we change it because this was voted on?
We could just clarify that when a, when a report is available and then they, they'll come do a full briefing and walk you through everything.
That's fine, and that's what I'll do.
That's the motion, okay. That's exactly what that was, okay, I thought so. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's the end of the report.
No new business, any old business? No. Look how early we go. Commissioner is.
You've already given your report.
I, I just want to say thank you very much, you and the Vice Chairman. It was a little contentious tonight. And every commissioner here, they expressed their views and I appreciate that. And everybody done it very diligently and very, you know, it was just, it was a good meeting. Although, you know, we had taken some things we probably didn't want to talk about. But this is why we're elected. Thank you.
Chairman, sorry, what I think, I just want to publicly thank Mayor Frank for setting up the K-25 history, um, thing last Friday and, um, UCOR meeting, it was great. A lot of information. So I really appreciate you getting that thing care for us.
Absolutely. And, um, I have some extra packets and magazines for the commissioners who could not be there. And I'll get those put down in the commission room for whoever didn't attend, if they'd like to pick that data up.
Thank you.